Are you ready? I think we have a full house. Welcome. We're going to start the City Council's study session for November 6, 2017. Council, everybody has their nourishment in front of them. Are we ready to get to work, I guess? Tonight is going to be all study session. And we have two very interesting topics for this evening. And so we might as well get to work and maybe we can get out of here a little bit early this evening.
Okay, that is the hope that I think that we all have tonight. So let me turn things—
You have that same hope every time you come.
Exactly.
With that, Mr. City Manager? Let's turn things over to Jeff Thomas, our Community Development Director, who is going to do a little bit of introduction and turn things over to David Pyle.
Well, good evening, City Council. Jeff Thomas with Planning. And the better dressed of the two of us at the table is David Pyle this evening. So we're going to take you through a pretty straightforward presentation related to the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies no disturbance area pilot program. You'll recall this was an emergency ordinance back in May. That council directed staff to complete a full legislative review. We're nearing the end of that process. David will speak to our work with the Planning Commission and their recommendation during his presentation and walk you through some of the analysis that we've done. So with that, David, I'll turn it right over to you and we'll get going.
Thank you, Jeff.
But if I could just interject for a second. I just wanted to speak to the council for a second. We have two, you know, two subjects that are going to require a lot of presentation this evening. So if council could hold their questions until after the presentations are given, I think that might give us a little bit more continuity as we go through them. So write down your questions, if you have any, as we go through, and we'll have questions at the end. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Mayor. David Pyle, Community Development Department. So tonight, we're here to talk about the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies no disturbance area pilot program. The pilot program was added to the Sammamish Municipal Code as part of the city's environmentally critical areas rules in 2013, a process that began in 2011, worked its way through the Planning Commission, and ended up in the council. The pilot program was not made effective until March of 2017 because it was integrated into the city's shoreline master program, which required amendment approval through the Department of Ecology. It was not made effective by the Department of Ecology until the beginning of March of Following the effectiveness of the program in May of 2017, the council citing concerns that the requirements and development regulations from the pilot program were inadequate, requested that staff prepare interim development regulations. On May 22, the council declared an emergency and adopted interim development regulations. The interim regulations removed the pilot program. The council directed staff, as Jeff indicated, to evaluate the components of the pilot program and engage the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission received the background information from city staff and discussed the pilot program in September, October, in September and October meetings of this year. As a brief background, if you recall, the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay is broken into two categories, two areas per the definition. There's that portion of the erosion hazard near sensitive water body that is draining to the no disturbance area. That's the portion that's uphill of the no disturbance area. And then it's the no disturbance area itself, which is the sloped portion that sort of falls down from the top of the plateau towards the lake. We'll have a map here in a minute that will show you where these are located. The purpose of the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay is to identify areas that we really need to protect in order to ensure that we're not causing degradation to sensitive water bodies through erosion. These are the maps that I had alluded to. The first one shows the erosion hazard areas and the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies. This is important because it shows where those areas that are classified as erosion hazards are located, in contrast with the areas that are identified as erosion hazards near sensitive water bodies. So you can see that the westerly edge of the city is characterized by erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies, whereas the erosion hazard areas, according to our maps, extend further to the east in the city as well. This map distinguishes between the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay and the no disturbance area. So that portion that is, I think, call it yellow or green here versus the orange. The orange would be the portion that is the area draining to the no disturbance area. And the greenish-yellow would be the no disturbance area itself. This map adds in there the erosion hazard areas in addition to the no disturbance area and the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies. So you can see how the different layers overlap each other and where there might be some discrepancies in the mapping. And finally, we have the no disturbance area contrasted with the erosion hazard areas. So you can again see where there's some discrepancy in the mapping. The pilot program, excuse me, the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay includes a no disturbance area in which there are limitations on development. The limitations generally preclude development activity except for some specific types of developments such as single-family residences, utility corridors, public streets and utilities, et cetera. And it also allowed for limited work authorized under the pilot program. The pilot program was intended to allow for limited development under strict limitations in order to evaluate the ability to allow increased development. Essentially, it was intended to serve as a demonstration project where we could see how we could apply newer technologies and how we could ensure through proper design and monitoring that we were not actually leading to degradation of our sensitive water bodies. A maximum of four projects were authorized by the pilot program. Two of the projects would have required a tight-line drainage system from the development site down to Lake Sammamish or the receiving water body. Two of them would have required strict application of low-impact development practices. And all of the pilot programs were subject to restrictive construction windows, clearing limits, and comprehensive monitoring requirements. Our analysis of the pilot program and the four subdivision projects, two of which would have required a tight line and two of which would have required extensive low-impact development techniques, was that, first of all, the two that would have required low-impact development techniques were virtually unbuildable because they only allowed for 10% impervious surface on the site, which is really difficult in a subdivision when you have to account for things like streets, driveways, and we have other public work standards that that is directly in conflict with. With regard to the two programs that would have required a drainage tight line from the construction site down to the receiving water body, Lake Sammamish, is that the cost of constructing the drainage, the tight line, down to the lake was excessively high. And what was happening was is that the cost and the economics of these projects was attracting larger projects. And that's contrary to the intent of the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay and the no disturbance area in that it was actually driving towards larger development projects as opposed to looking towards projects that were smaller in character and were more low-impact development oriented. So the conclusion that we came to was that large-scale subdivision within the no disturbance area is not appropriate and presents a high level of erosion risk and is contrary to the intent of the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay and the no disturbance area rules. The Planning Commission, after three meetings, voted unanimously seven to zero to remove the pilot program from the Sammamish Municipal Code. And I believe in tomorrow night's agenda materials, there is included a Planning Commission recommendation for your review. And with that concludes my presentation. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
First, we have Deputy Mayor Malchow.
So could you go back to your map? Because I'm looking at the mapping software on the city of Sammamish, and the two overlays just don't look the same. So I'm trying to make sure I have turned on the same overlays. So I have the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay and the no disturbance. You had one that had the no disturbance on it. The map that's on the city of Sammamish that you can look at just doesn't look like this. So I'm curious as to which one's right.
So what we did is we changed the colors to better contrast the difference. So in this case, it should be the exact same information with regard to where the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay, which is the orange layer in the background, is located. And it should be the same as the no disturbance area as well. Both of the layers have not been modified. They're the same as are being drawn from the server through the Sammamish Property Tool
I guess because I can't zoom in on your map. It's just they don't look quite the same. But again, I can't zoom in on your map where I can zoom in on this map.
And I'm happy to check that, check with our GIS analyst who did this work.
Can they confirm that for tomorrow?
Be happy to confirm it in the morning.
Great. Next is Councilmember Jaren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. One, you stated in the beginning that the council put the ordinance in place because requirements and development regs of the pilot program are inadequate. Could you get into more specifics on that? What were the inadequacies and how does staff recommend we can overcome those inadequacies?
So my recollection was that following the passing or the approval by Department of Ecology of the city's shoreline master program updates, that there was a project that was emerging, a 30-lot subdivision, which is a fairly large project for a no disturbance area, was causing for some public sentiment and that we were hearing from many of the neighbors regarding the adequacy of this program. And that what we were looking at was quite a bit of, or a large amount of clearing and grading within a no disturbance area as part of the proposed subdivision that was causing for concern with the neighbors. And the, one of the things that we wanted to address was the adequacy of the program and whether or not it actually was going to address the intent of the program or the intent of the no disturbance area, which is to protect our sensitive water bodies from increased levels of erosion. And when we see large projects like this, we tend to see large areas of disturbance. Larger subdivisions cause for larger disturbed areas. They're harder to control. They're harder to manage erosion control practices on. They require larger crews that are better trained than smaller projects. And those are all items that are contrary to the intent of the no disturbance area.
Well, I watched the Planning Commission hearing on the pilot program, and there was one citizen who commented that about the old Mill Point, Weber's Ridge, and Chrysalis Estates, 123 lots which were built under King County's jurisdiction.
Is that Mr. Easton who sent us the meeting?
Yes. And the hearing examiner information came out that before the developments, there were stream deposits of some 500 tons of material into Lake Sammamish each year and 700 kilograms of phosphorus. Obviously, it wasn't verified, but a lot of it. And the point was that after the development, that what you're getting with the tight line to the lake is pretreated, controlled, clean water going into the lake. So you actually improve the conditions by allowing the development. And so with the pilot project, the goal was to see if we can do that, if we can actually improve conditions by doing this. I agree with the LID pilot probably doesn't make sense. And we've heard that from citizens, too, that you worry about putting water back into the hillside when you could end up exacerbating the situation. But it seems to me that if you have a pilot project to see if indeed you can improve situations environmentally and still allow development and property ownership rights, I think we ought to go forward with a pilot project. The other comment I have is the method of doing the mapping. I've seen some sites, site-specific, was it site-specific mapping? I don't believe so, was it? This was done by King County?
The mapping that we're looking at here this evening? It originated in King County, that's correct.
Right. So, and I think we were told by staff in the past that the maps are simply kind of gross approximations in that if there's a specific project, you do site-specific determination of whether it really is in a no disturbance area or not. And I also saw some contradictions as to what defines a no disturbance area. Is it steep slope or is it simply above a steep slope?
The no disturbance area itself includes in the definition a certain slope aspect in addition to certain types of soils. So then in addition to that, within the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies, there's those areas that drain to the no disturbance area. And that's the area that you may be referencing that is above the no disturbance area that drains to it, that we also want to protect with the intent of not discharging large volumes of water onto those sites that are susceptible to higher rates of erosivity.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Hornish and then Councilmember Odell.
Okay, two questions. Did the Planning Commission discuss in detail the fact that there are variances available? And if so, was there a specific discussion that a larger development could get a variance if they wanted to? And if that's the case, what would be that process?
They did not specifically discuss variances. We did mention to them during the presentation that an alternative to a pilot program would be a variance process, that if there was no pilot program available to a property owner who felt that they were in a situation of a hardship, that they may be eligible for a variance.
And what would be that process? It has to go through the DOE to actually get the variance, is that correct?
It'd be administrative here. I believe it goes, yeah.
Okay. Through you, but the DOE wouldn't have to sign off on it?
They would not.
They would not, okay. Second question and last question. I think most of the non-disturbance areas are in zones, R4 in general, I'll say. Is that correct, generally?
Yes. The bulk is in R4.
Yeah. So the question I have is, do those property owners still, would they have the ability to still sell a TDR?
That depends on whether or not they meet the criteria for ascending site. There are specific requirements that allow for someone to qualify to sell TDRs from their properties. Some properties are restricted from selling them. I would have to look at the criteria to determine that.
Okay. Thanks.
It's like Councilmember Romero, or Valderrama's next?
I thought Odell you said.
He changed his mind.
He changed his mind? Big bite, huh? Okay. Thank you for the presentation. As I've asked on the email, in 2013, whether you're for or against the pilots or that, the same issue had come up. In 2013, the city strenuously argued that it should go forward, strenuously argued on the technical merits of it going forward. So I'd like to see those arguments from 2013 that were made when that discussion was talking about should we have pilots or not. Additionally, one point that jumped at mind to me was you were talking about the monitoring costs and that. It was my recollection that all monitoring costs were to be absorbed by the pilot sites. And it didn't have to be a large site. There was one of the pilots was a wetland, isolated wetland, which was approved, I believe, 5-2 or 6-1 in the vote. And that wetland was a single-family home. And they were going to take all costs for the monitoring of the process and that. So I don't think it's being depicted properly on the monitoring costs that's being shown. Additionally, I'm uncomfortable, whether, again, you're for or against it. The city spent hundreds of thousands of dollars bringing experts in. They spent two years worth of testimonies that had come in. The Planning Commission spent a year in that. And that was all brought forward and looked at and analyzed by the council at that time. None of that's been brought before this council right now. And so it looks like a knee-jerk reaction and really a slap at all the citizens who had participated in that process, as well as the planning commissioners who were involved in the council to just say, well, I don't know what we're really talking about. And the last time this came up on the moratorium, most of the same council didn't even know that there was expert testimony on the website. So I'm trying to figure out how we're addressing this. I think it would be much more appropriate, since we haven't had those discussions, to move this to the next council so they could at least have a basis of what was invested into this, what was the rationale, which I understand is actually promoted by the state to see if best practices allow. And that calmly and understanding what the issues are, be able to select and address it. Furthermore, when this was originally approved, and I had put this in my email, we need to look at alternatives. I personally think that the way it was done of how they came forward should have had a different process where the city looked at which pilots is the city interested in having. And then based upon that, put it out to the citizens to see who would be interested in participating in the pilots. And through a selection process of those two criterias, the council selects. We had a problem that a lot of these pilots were coming to us with names already of people who wanted a subdivide. And I think that was wrong, in my personal opinion. But personally, I don't think we have the time now with the short calendar here and most of this council leaving in three meetings and most of them not even knowing it, that this really, in my opinion, should be left to the next council and have some study sessions so they can look at it and then move more methodically, purposefully, and respectfully on it. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions from there. I would be curious, as a follow-up to Councilmember Valderrama's comment, if this were to be put off, since this is, was an emergency, what would be the process if that was something?
Well, the program could be extended after six months. Extend or it lapses if there's no other action, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
When is that? The end of November?
Correct.
Any other comments? Great. Thank you.
So, may I, Mayor, just indulge for one more minute? So just to that last point from Councilmember Valderrama. So if council was interested in extending the emergency ordinance beyond six months, staff would respectfully request that. We get some semblance of direction from council tomorrow night after completing the public hearing, because we'll need to bring something back on the 21st of November because the six months is actually the 22nd of November. If that makes sense. Thank you.
So you want that direction today?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
You're scheduled to have a public hearing on the subject tomorrow evening, so.
Okay. I think that concludes item one. How are we doing on time?
Better than I thought.
We're doing well.
Okay. So now we have the concurrency and level of service options. Mr. City Manager?
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, we are going to utilize the services of some consulting help from Farram Peers. And we'll turn things over to Jesse Bond to lead us into the discussion.
Is this one on? Yep. Thank you, Lyman. And is this mic working? Yes?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. While they're getting seated over there, I just wanted to first begin by saying you all have put in a tremendous amount of time on this topic, not only in the past several months, but particularly in the past three weeks, meeting with staff, fielding our phone calls, and really working this issue. So thank you. I know you have lives and duties outside of being council members. So tonight, we have a number of folks here to present. You know Kendra Breeland with Farram Peers, Victor Salman is here, Cheryl Paston, and Steve Lenischewski is in the back. So I would like to ask something. This presentation, the components all build upon each other. If possible, we would like to go through the whole presentation before we come back and field questions. I think that will help.
Whoa.
All right. Thank you for agreeing. That's what I heard, right? Okay, let's go ahead and move to the first slide, and then I'll turn it over to the crew at the desk. So tonight, we're going to work through a number of topics. First of all, Kendra's going to walk us back through the priorities that we've heard through our TMP process. I think it's good to reflect on where the community is at. We're going to share three options at this point that we've put together in regards to updating our concurrency program. We're going to talk a little bit about how we might begin to use data differently in our planning and day-to-day management. We have some thoughts on, while all this policy work is wonderful, or not, doing something may actually speak to some of the needs on the ground right now. So we're going to walk through some suggestions we have for near-term capital projects. And then we'll talk about where we are in the planning process and next steps. So with that, I will hand it over to Kendra.
Great. Thank you. And it sounds like I'm on. All right. Well, as Jesse related, we wanted to start this presentation by talking about where we've been and particularly what we've heard, first from council, and then we'll talk about what we've heard from the community. So there's just kind of some primary themes that we've heard over and over again that we think are really important and should kind of guide kind of where we go, wherever we go on level of service and concurrency. So we've heard first and foremost, driver experience should be a key measure of system performance. And so dissatisfaction with the current system and how it reflects driver experience and that we should develop a system that better reflects it. Secondly, peaking in Sammamish doesn't just happen in the evening, particularly with schools. The AM peak hour is important to consider as well. Thirdly, the current system is very complex, and it's important that we develop something that our community can understand, as that really will help to build and cultivate trust. Fourthly, to leverage the best available data. So we're a community, we're in a very high-tech region. We've got a lot of access to, we've got a very educated populace. So let's make sure that in our transportation planning processes that we are leveraging the best available data. And then last but not least, this community prides itself on doing a really good job of making growth pay for growth. So whatever system we ultimately arrive at, it needs to maintain our ability to assess high-impact fees. So going out to the community, as you know, we had a pretty extensive community process over the summertime. We ended up getting feedback from over 550 people in the community. And, you know, some of the things we heard were, one, that transportation priorities in this community are very diverse. So while almost everybody expressed concerns about the level of congestion we see today, we also heard definitely some sentiment for more connections being needed within this community, as well as more multimodal options. And the community was pretty well-educated, I have to say, in my— And the community was pretty well-educated, I have to say, in my discussions. They understood that the issues they experienced on 202, the issues they experienced on I-90 and 405, aren't necessarily, you know, the issues that have been brought to them by Sammamish. But they were interested in seeing the community, the city, do whatever it can to advocate for more regional improvements and more transit service. And then, you know, just kind of, I would stress, while this council is very educated on the topics of level of service and concurrency, your average citizen isn't thinking about the concurrency process per se. What they care about are the transportation projects that are coming out of the process and what their day-to-day experience is, whether they choose to drive, take transit, walk, or bike. So with kind of that input in mind, we have, we're coming to you with kind of three options tonight. We look at them maybe as bookends, but starting point to really discuss with council, based on what we've heard. So the first option is really to retain intersection level of service and segment evaluation, but with some modifications. So under this option, we generally be taking today's system and making some updates to bring it up to what we would expect from kind of a 2017 standard. Second option is to move away from segment level, kind of segment performance measures and base concurrency on intersections only. Under this option, we would also have kind of a multimodal level of service for planning and other modes. And then the third option that we're going to bring forward is a complete replacement of what we have today, basing concurrency on travel time and multimodal level of service, which, again, is something that we looked at at our first technical meeting. So for option one, which is retaining the current system but with modifications, generally what we'd be looking at is replacing T8, Table T8, from the comprehensive plan with more of an arterial level of service table that would focus on vehicle capacity measures only. So it would strip away some of these measures that we're less comfortable with. It'd be stripping away the walkway and bikeway measures, the trail considerations, and some of the shoulder and bike lane considerations, and really focusing on those measures that really influence driver experience and have kind of documented ability to do so. Number of travel lanes, presence of turn lanes, medians, and access management. By removing those non-motorized elements of Table T, we think that that would address many of the concerns that we've heard from council. Under this measure, we might potentially consider discontinuing quarter averaging, as that has been a major concern expressed, and instead look at evaluating each segment individually. But again, that's an option under this approach. As I said earlier, this system would continue the use of intersection level of service measure. I've got kind of on the screen there is the intersection level of service table that's in your comprehensive plan today. And we would consider incorporating both AM and PM peak hour measures, so that we're not just looking at what that PM peak hour experience is, but we're also considering how these intersections are performing in the morning. From the perspective of multiple modes, something else that we've heard from council members is they appreciate that the current system currently leads to the construction of complete streets, to make sure that we're still thinking about our walking and biking facilities. We would be looking at, while they would be removed from the arterial level of service table, we would be moving towards having a multimodal level of service standard to ensure that essentially improvements for people who are choosing to walk, bike, or transit are being constructed. And I've got a little diagram there on the screen. As we talked about in the technical meeting, we would be developing priority networks as a part of the TMP. For each of those priority networks, we'd be developing level of service standards, so level of service standards for walking, biking, and transit. And from those standards, we would be developing multimodal projects. And because those projects would be defined in your plan, and we would work to make sure that those would be eligible for impact fees. So some pros and cons here of this option. First of all, if policy changes are minimal, so potentially if we're not getting rid of the segment averaging, this could be done relatively quickly. The arterial level of service table would be grounded in the most recent HCM research. And another benefit that we see here is that it would provide more flexibility in the citing of walking, biking, and transit improvements. So again, in kind of going to those multimodal networks, those could be pulled in, but in a more flexible manner. And then last would be just another benefit is that this would give us the ability to maintain the current impact fee program. Certainly, there's some disadvantages to this approach. It maintains pretty much the current level of complexity, while, you know, the new arterial level of service table would be simpler. We still are measuring intersections, segments, and multimodal facilities. So that's a lot of stuff to measure. It's hard to explain to the layman. It would be using, using the most recent HCM methodology, just, TSI has done some initial looking at this. It's likely going to lead to a few more existing deficiencies than we have today. And so, of course, that would have a rippling effect on the amount of impact fees that could be charged to development in the community. And then last, in terms of our cons, would be removal of segment averaging would reduce the flexibility of the timing of project implementation. Few last observations of option one. It's fairly low cost, because we're kind of moving forward with what we have today. And the timeline fits in a pretty short timeline. It would take six to eight weeks to develop a revised arterial level of service table. If we choose to look at AM conditions and develop an AM model, we recognize that would take three to four months to develop. At this point, it's recommended that the TMP develop the multimodal networks and level of service standards, although for the current comp plan, we could develop some language that will refer to that future TMP. And as you can see, there's a little asterisk there on timeline, and this is going to be in each of the options that we bring up. This timeline is really for developing working drafts. This does not include the time that it would take Planning Commission or council to review in more official review processes. So we're just putting that caveat out there. Option two is a simpler option. It's really doing away with segment performance, your Table T8 today, and going strictly to intersections only. This option could consider including both AM and PM peak hours into the standard. So again, looking at both of those times, and we know congestion exists in Sammamish. And then lastly, it could be tied, again, to that multimodal level of service standard. That's actually consistent amongst all the three options we're talking about today, is using the TMP process to come up with those multimodal networks and level of service Lots of pros to this option. One, it could be done very quickly and would greatly simplify the city's concurrency system. It could be grounded in the most recent HCM research. It provides, again, by using the TMP process to come up with those multimodal networks, it provides flexibility in the citing of walk, bike, and transit improvements. And we believe that this option would also be supportive of maintaining your current impact fee program. The primary con to this system is just that it would require additional documentation to justify some of the capacity projects in the impact fee program. Victor and I, through our work with other communities all over the region, we think this isn't a problem, but we did want to flag it that that's just an additional level of documentation that would be needed. This is our lowest-cost option, and from the perspective of timeline, fairly quick, just would require rewriting your current level of service standard in your comp plan. If we choose to do an AM model, again, we'd need the time to develop that. And again, we're looking to the TMP process to develop the walk, bike, and transit networks and LOS. So the third option is really departing from what we have today and creating just a complete replacement program. It would be looking to use INREX data to base our standards on travel times for the vehicular side, and again, multimodal level of service for the non-vehicular side. We would be focusing on travel times, which for INREX data, you can get that data for any time of day. So we would imagine that you'd develop a standard for both AM and the PM peak hour. Travel times, benefit to this is that it's probably the most direct measure we can possibly come up with for driver experience. But there's a lot of policy decisions that would need to be made along the way. The city would need to develop, or would need to adopt, travel time standards for each of the quarters in the city. And, you know, while consultants and staff could certainly recommend some potentially reasonable standards based on HCM research, the ultimate standard, so how long, what is a reasonable travel time along a certain quarter, what those specific quarters are and what their limits are, will be subject to policy decision that would certainly need to come through council. From the, again, from the perspective of non-motorized and multimodal users, that would be done through the TMP process. Pros and cons here. From the perspective of pros, travel times, of course, are a strong measure of driver experience. Real-time data could be used to continuously monitor travel times, as INREX data is available, and you can look at it by different times of day, different times of the year, different This option, again, would provide more flexibility in the citing of walk, bike, and transit improvements. It would eliminate potentially segments and quarters, and we think could still be supportive of your current impact fee program. But certainly, the cons are that this takes a longer time to develop. Travel time standards and quarters are going to be, need to be a policy decision. And just in terms of, from developer review, from the perspective of folks that are coming and need to do a traffic study in the city, we recognize that speed can be more difficult to predict. So it's going to require more analytical tools that would either need to be asked of the development community, or that staff are going to have to do in-house. So the primary drawback to this option is that, is the cost. Just when we think through, it's not, it's not the purchase of the INREX data per se, but it's really developing all these analytical processes that would be a large draw on the city's financial resources. Timeline is also an issue. We know that council is very interested in coming up with a solution in a reasonable timeframe. We recognize this is six to nine months out to develop this sort of program and get it to kind of more of an, and get you towards adoption of it. And we recognize that's a longer time period than most council members are looking for. And again, so I think that's the primary thing there. Just quickly, we did want to do an add-on. Irrespective of which option you pick, A, 1, 2, or 3, or some hybrid in between, or something completely outside of that, we did want to say that we think that staff recommendation is that use of innovative data is an excellent idea in this community, and that is something that should be brought...
Can you repeat that, please? You cut out on me in the middle of that. Can you repeat that last sentence again? Irrespective, you said?
Irrespective of which option you select, whether it's 1, 2, 3, or something completely outside of that, we think that innovative data, bringing in INREX data and some of those resources is a very good idea and could support some very good planning within this community. So we've talked, staff and consultants have talked at length. We think that the ability to monitor transportation system over time is a very good thing. INREX data is relatively affordable, about $15,000 annually to get kind of access to that data. I would draw your attention to the screen there. We have shown where INREX data is available within the city. As you can see, that is clearly not covering every street in the city and not all of your major arterials. So that's something just to kind of ring into the fold here, that clearly it's not like any tool, it's not a silver bullet. But we think that for those roads where INREX data exists, it provides some very good information. And it gives us the ability to look at, you know, if you've got a road closure somewhere, you're actually able to pull out the INREX data and understand, well, how did that road closure impact surrounding facilities? So with that, actually, I'm going to turn it back to Jesse.
Thank you. Before I talk about capital project options, I did want to answer one question that was asked of me earlier today, which was, we don't like your little symbol dollar signs because we don't know what that represents. So fair enough. What I can tell you is on the upper limit, option three, our most expensive option, tomorrow in your mid-biennial budget packet, we have identified between $600,000 and $700,000 for that option. So that's kind of your worst-case scenario. Everything else is less than that, depending on which policy options you choose. If we can narrow our focus to a couple options tonight, we would be prepared by the end of November at your technical meeting to talk a little bit more about cost estimates. So I wanted to at least give you that one end of the range. So moving on and completing our presentation tonight, we've talked about your concurrency options, we've talked about using data to inform our day-to-day management, and now I want to talk about some near-term capital project options. As we've worked through these discussions through the last three months, we've certainly heard loudly that we need to fix some problems now. So we've put together this list, and I have to say, the staff can't take all the credit. Many of you contributed thoughts and ideas over the last few weeks, as did our consultants. So the first project is to revise the Sahali Way project. You may recall, we did a full design on Sahali Way that did not move forward. We would like to actually recommend we go back and take a look at Sahali Way. And there are some options to think about. One, and I think Councilmember Jaren gets credit for this, is to go back and look at, if we improved all of the intersections on Sahali Way, all the way down to 202, what would that look like? What would that do for driver experience and capacity? On the flip side, we've also looked at asking ourselves a question. If we wanted to expand capacity on this road, what would that entail? So with your blessing tonight, we will take the next step, actually tomorrow afternoon, with our consulting teams, to just do an initial reimagining of this project and get prepared to come back to you on November 21st with an early concept. And I emphasize the word "very early" concept, because before we spent any more money redesigning, we would want to touch in with the council and get further direction. So that's Sahali Way. We are also recommending that you consider funding the design of Izuaq Pine Lake Road. This is a concurrency project. It's been on RTIP for a number of years, and it has not moved forward, partially because our practice historically has been, the project doesn't move forward unless we have the funding to complete the whole project. Well, at this time, we don't have that funding, but it is a very important piece of our concurrency work, and we think it needs to go forward. There are certainly some advantages, and I've shared these with most of you recently. By designing it now, we would be eligible for grants. We would certainly be more prepared when development comes in off of that road. We already know what needs to be built. And I think it sends a good message to our partners, namely Izuaq, that we are interested in working on that section of our city. Number three is a little bit smaller in scale. We recognize that, as Kendra noted on option two, focusing on our intersections, that there are things that we can do in real time to improve our intersections. Flashing yellows, we just installed flashing yellow lights this year. We've talked about looking at intersection capacity, extending left turn lanes, and things like that. So funding, setting aside some dedicated funds so that we can do minor intersection work throughout the year as opportunities arise, would be another useful way to bring near-term capital projects to the table. The other thing, and number four ties back to number one, which is to set aside funding or seed money, or whatever you call it, for future projects that are outside of the city. Certainly, the number-one project, at least anecdotally in conversations with a number of you these past few weeks, is the Sahali Way 202 intersection. We have a study that's going forward this year on 202 with WashDOT. But we may be able to move something forward more quickly if we commit an investment of our capital funds to improving that intersection. I also sent you an email this afternoon. I had some questions today about the WashDOT I-90 interchange study. So right now, this... So right now, this is just a study, would probably be, and it's funded, WashDOT has funded that study, and there's a consultant that's been selected. It would probably be premature for the staff to recommend making an investment in that project right now, but we will certainly be participating as a stakeholder in the planning process, because that interchange directly infects our commuters on the south end. So now that you've heard, this was a package tonight, some concurrency options, how we'd like to start using data, and some do-something-now capital project options. Kendra has one more slide, and then I think it would make sense to go back and answer your questions. I know you have some, I've seen you all writing furiously. So Kendra, do you want to recap next steps, and then we'll go back?
Sure. So just reminder of where you'll see us again. As Jessie already related, we're coming back on the 21st of November. So we're going to do kind of a TMP update. We've, you know, had a series of meetings, we met with the Transit Committee, met with the Principals Roundtable, so we wanted to share some insights from that. And then, of course, talk about some of these capital projects. On the 28th is when we've scheduled Technical Meeting Two. That's based on whether you pick option one, two, or three tonight, or give us some other form of direction. That's where we will continue and have a more detailed discussion of concurrency options and the use of innovative data. Just looking out into 2018, our hope is that, is to develop a concurrency program and continue work on the TMP in Quarter One. For Quarters Two and Three, we're hoping that you will be able to adopt a transportation element with a new concurrency policy. We'll meanwhile still be working on the TMP, which we're looking to finalize and hopefully get your adoption by the end of 2018. So that's, that's it. We are to the questions portion of this agenda.
Great, I see questions already, beginning with Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. Jessie, Kendra, thank you for the run-through on all of this. It's pretty consistent with what we've individually seen earlier. I do have some questions, though. On option one, one of the cons was listed as if continuing to use the Highway Capacity Manual methodology would likely increase the number of failures. Would you not be able to also say this is simply recognizing reality, perhaps?
Victor?
Guess I'm not quite sure what that means. I can explain why, why we think it would increase the number of deficiencies.
Please do.
The new segment methodology actually includes intersection treatments indirectly in it. So it assumes a certain number that may or may not exist. The other thing it does is it reduces or adjusts capacity based on functional classification, so principal arterial, minor arterial, and collector. Certain roadways in the city act differently than they're classified. For instance, East Lake Sammich Parkway on both the north and south end, if you look at the definition of a minor arterial versus a principal arterial, they are functioning as principal arterials, but they're currently defined minor arterials, and therefore they would fail by definition in the new methodology, or at least fail more. So there are some additional policy decisions that would we have to make, and those, those numbers are generalized for sort of conditions everywhere. And we would, without modifying them more, like the original T8 was modified to be localized, we think we'd see some more. And that'd be class, probably where you'd see those failures, is the minor arterials would pop up as failures sooner, because the current T8 has the same capacity for a principal arterial as a minor arterial, to reflect that reality that existed.
Victor, I don't know that we, we talked about this, but you've done some recent research, and if we rebuild Table T8, we are now able to tie it back to Table 1614?
Yes, I think, yeah, it's 1416.
In the current version of HCM, I think everyone's familiar with the struggles with Table T8 and our inability to go back and recreate how that was originally developed. So we do have a tool now.
And we've actually, in our research, found a project that, done by Maricopa County, California, that kind of expanded even on the Highway Capacity Manual and developed what they call generalized capacities in ADT for arterial streets. And they have a whole series with multiple adjustments that we would probably start with if we wanted to go that direction.
Okay. Continuing on, Bob, I have a list here, so please bear with me. The AM development would take some number of weeks. This could be done in parallel with whatever model we pick, correct?
Yes. So developing a, so there's, you have two models, so let's be clear about which one we're talking about. You, you have a, what's called a travel demand forecasting model, so that's the predictive model. That's the one that only does PM peak right now. You also have an operational model that analyzes the intersections that are listed in the Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element. You have a AM version that's been developed as part of the TMP, so you can currently look at 2016 operations of the system in AM and add, for instance, add a lane or add a turn lane and see what happens at a certain intersection. So you do in-place have an operational model for existing, we just don't have a predictive tool for what does AM 2030 look like.
Okay. So to be clear, for example, if you look at option three, it says six to nine months to develop a travel time-based program, and AM model as desired would take three to four months to develop. They are not additive, correct?
Correct, they're two independent tasks.
Okay, so whichever one is longer is the pacing item.
Right.
And frankly, I go on record right now and say I believe we need to do the AM, but, okay.
I'm sorry, you said frankly, you're not, or you are?
I am in favor of doing the AM and PM both. Option two, my concern with this is that we have some segments in the city, and I'll use Sahali Way as an example. From northeast 25th up to northeast 37th is about a mile and a half. That's a long way. And if we're not looking at that segment, we're probably missing some things. So I think for that reason, I'm leaning in favor of the segment approach along with the intersection. And I'll give you my, tip my hand right now, I think I'm leaning toward option, option one. Option three, the issue here, as I see it, is how we develop the travel time standards. Now, in recs could help us understand what the travel time really is, but it doesn't tell us what a standard should be. So how would we go about developing the standard?
So I can take a shot at that. So the Highway Capacity Manual, the vast majority of those standards are directly related to user experience, as you've been talking about. For instance, the, the new bicycle level of service standard, bicyclists were equipped with video cameras and drove down certain facilities and then graded that facility. It wasn't a measurement of, you know, the measurements were done afterwards. Someone then looked at how many cars were next to that bicyclist, how many sidewalks did they pass over, driveways. So it really, it's a pure policy decision. So what in recs could inform you of is here's the travel speed today, and your policy decision would be for this particular segment or piece of 228th, is today's speed okay? Is it, is it higher than it should be? Can it be lower? It's really a pure policy decision. There is, there are some arterial sort of level of service standards that are speed-based, but they are based on the assumption that faster is better. And when you pick those, then you end up with extremely wide roads. And so that's why in that Vancouver example, you saw the peak hour, you know, acceptable travel time or speed, they're both kind of interrelated, was much lower than the speed limit, recognizing that we don't want to design, you know, for the peak period all day long. So it would be, and very often that might be by, based by functional classification, is you might want principal arterials to maintain a higher operating speed during the day than minor arterials. Or you could choose the other way in order to not have huge capital projects. You might choose that some of your arterials have a lower peak hour operating speed, whether it's AM or PM. So we probably, you know, the, the number we'll find is really a highway capacity assumption that faster is better and cost is no object. We're just going to build what we need to go 35 miles an hour 24 hours a day. The real, the reality will probably be something less than that. And so the, the place to start would be with in recs to demonstrate, you know, to identify, okay, these are problematic segments, that's an unacceptable speed, so if the unacceptable one turns out to be 12 miles an hour, then we'll go, okay, well, that's, that's LOSF is 12 miles an hour, and we'd want to go faster.
Yeah, fine.
You could get totally bogged up in whether it's one hour a day that you have a problem, or if you're below in a 35-mile zone, if you're doing less than 25 or four hours a day, 80% of the time, or 60% of the time, whatever it is. And there's a number of iterations you could play there.
Sure.
So, look, okay, there it is. So looking at that data, the simple thing might be, so that's, that's the north-south corridor from Issaquah Falls City Road, Issaquah Pine Lake Road at the south, up to 202 Sahali Way at the north. So if you kind of want to integrate that, that figure, how much orange is acceptable? That would be sort of the average speed over, that's a 24-hour period that's being shown from left to right, and it's the corridor from south to north going up and down. So you can see the kind of yellow-orange band in the bottom third, that's the intersection of Issaquah Pine Lake 228th. So you can see it's kind of yellow-orange almost all day. So it's, the area around that intersection is problematic all day long, where other areas where you have blue is where speeds are, you know, within about 10% of the speed limit almost all the time. So you would probably take some corridors again, I know that'd cause some consternation, but you'd look at diagrams like this and say, all right, do we want to, does the whole diagram have to be blue, which means everyone's going the speed limit 24 hours a day? Or can 10% of the diagram be orange at any one time, meaning 10% of our system is below, you know, 15% of the speed limit? That's, it takes a lot of work to kind of establish that standard.
The one thing I would add is, just as we've talked about pairing in recs data with any of these standards, I think the opportunity that is raised in doing that is that you can watch and you can actually see problems develop. Staff can anticipate them, and you can adjust your capital project fairly proactively. So even if you did, and again, I'm not here to recommend one option versus the other, but if you did go to something as simple as an intersection standard, you can pair that with in recs data to monitor those issues that are maybe farther away from intersections, catch them, and your public work staff can come back and recommend solutions to address those hotspot points.
Just looking at this, this is really interesting, I like this type of thing. But this is south to north at 5:00, and the north end of Sahali Way at 5:00 is not the problem, is southbound at 5:00 is the problem.
Yeah. So this, you know, the sample, we did a limited sample to show you, since you haven't bought the data yet, that was a snapshot. But yes, you can, you can do either direction, you can do the, again, you can do the average of both directions.
Do time of day.
That's actually, that's 24 hours for, the average 24-hour speeds for all of July is actually what that's showing. The 5:00 PM is the map on the right side, so that's the actual speeds along the corridor at 5:00 PM. You can see the little clock on the top, but that's actually a screenshot from a video. So you can push play, and the colors on the corridor will change as you move through time to see where the delays occur.
This is a great monitoring device, no matter what we use.
And we are planning at the November 21st meeting to come back and show you a little bit more about how in recs works, because I realize this doesn't quite get us there.
Jessie, I've got a couple for you now. On your number three, if you go to your, back to your list of to-dos, yeah. On number three, first of all, I like this whole list, I really do. On number three, though, you might want to think about adding ITS improvements, where we do have a number of lights in the string, and what comes to mind is 228th north of northeast state, all the way down to 202.
Yes.
And the second thing would be Issaquah Pine Lake, as that is developed and built On item number four, I would add a third bullet, and that's East Lake Sammich SR 202, the intersection. And that's the whole Redmond-Marimore complex project.
Absolutely. So that, that intersection actually did come up in quite a few discussions, and without a doubt, it will be identified in your TMP. With this list, we were trying to give you some ideas of things you could do or direct us to do, like in the next four to eight weeks. Those other intersections, and there are a number outside the city that are problematic, you will still continue to see as part of the TMP process. And we would also then be working with the council to consider our regional partnership in those future intersection solutions. So yes, that one is still on the list.
Okay, thank you. That's my list, Bob.
Thank you, Councilmember Odell. Next, we have Councilmember Huckabee, please.
Oh, thank you. I have a couple of questions and an extended comment. I tend to favor the intersection LOS, and then looking at using other data to look at the segments in between. And it just so happened that I was standing at the corner of Issaquah Pine Lake Road and 228th this morning, and it was so painfully obvious that that intersection is an intersection which ties up all of 228th going both north and south. And I love in recs data, but I'd invite you to go stand out there on the corner, because the data says one thing, but when you see the, the interactions of the cars that are taking place there, because here you have an intersection that goes from two lanes to one lane. You have cars turning left onto 228, you have cars turning right onto 228, and they're all trying to jam themselves into that one lane, and they're, and it's gotten to the point where you watch students this morning coming from north to south, they won't even cross the street, because there's so many cars that are trying to turn left and turn right, that they actually block the intersection there. Then you've got cars coming out of the parking lot, parking lot, turning right, and then you've got cars coming from 32nd Street and turning right. So you've got this huge jam of those cars, and what you see is that it's all impacting the cars going north. So it doesn't take very much, other than a few minutes of observation, to see during the school period, it really is a mess, and we're going to have to address something in order to be able to clear cars going up and down the home road. And yes, I like your idea of the I-90 Front Street interchange, but I would work more carefully with Issaquah, the Issaquah Pine Lake Road 228, particularly if the schools go in at City Church, because that is entirely, it's very possible that some of our kids from our city will be going there, and when you're driving up and down, it's very difficult to get in and out of proper point or to make those left and right turns, and it's going to be very difficult for auto traffic to go in and out. So I would tend to really focus on the intersections, and I would put that intersection particularly at the top of the list, because you not only have all those cars, you now have the unmarked wait buses that are pulling off at the bus pull-up, and when they're trying to pull in front of everybody else. And it is, we might have to do that, I'm not sure I can do that, other than by the Shell Station at the parking lot, but either that or do a crossover for the kids to walk over and across, or adults like myself that are still there to go to the grocery store. But it seems like our city is not that complex. We have just a few roads going north and south, and it seems like looking-
All right, all right. So Kathy, while we're getting this, sometimes it does that, Cheryl, you may just have to turn it back on. Can we go back to your comment about the in recs data? The point you made about that intersection is very important. The in recs data doesn't, does not tell us what the solution is. We still need the engineers, breaking news, we still need engineers to go out and figure out what, what the fix is. And as I've been sharing, sometimes the solutions are potentially minor, you know, enhancing capacity, and sometimes it may be a much more complicated solution. So I appreciate you making that point.
Is on. I think whenever we're working with council and making infrastructure recommendations, we try to work with volumes that are realistic, and so to the extent that we know there's a nearby construction project, to the extent we're looking at an intersection. So if we were working on, you know, the kind of the 228th and Issaquah Pine Lake Road intersection that you're suggesting, we'd probably want to go back to what is the most recent count data that we have at that intersection that was pre-construction? Hopefully, we've got something fairly recent that does it. If it doesn't, then that's something that we'd need to talk about. How do we account for these other, you know, kind of construction issues that are impacting it? To the extent we have to go back a number of years, so maybe we have to go back two or three years to find a reasonable count, there are things, adjustments, that can be made to account for additional growth. We can look at how traffic volumes have increased on adjacent roads, given kind of growth patterns both within the city and regionally. So I think it's a good point, is we shouldn't blindly use count data or INREX data, we need to be kind of mindful of the context that that kind of nests within.
It'll be very interesting to see the data when school is in session versus when school is not in session, because it makes a huge difference.
Absolutely.
So this, I just want to mention technically, the system has some sort of a bug. It is timed out on us, and it's warming back up to restart, so hopefully, we can get it back on. If you would like, I would be happy to have somebody run and make copies of the presentation. We could be down for a few minutes. Why don't we just do that?
Can we go with questions?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I apologize, I have a lot of thoughts here. No way to keep it concise. So the first question I have is relative to option two, which is using the intersections for a level of service. And the question I asked this morning, and hopefully, you guys got the question passed to you, was how do we define the delay at an intersection? Because as I go driving through the city, you could be the first person that gets to the light as it turns yellow and then it turns red, you have to sit there and you wait. That seems obvious as to your delay at an intersection. What's maybe not so obvious is every morning when I drive Sahali and I turn the corner at 37th and I start heading down the hill, is that I immediately have to come to a stop and then a go, and a stop and a go, and a stop and a go. And my delay, I consider myself in the queue for the light all the way at the bottom of the hill, which takes me about 4 minutes and 15 seconds to get to. So at what point do we currently define when you are being counted towards that delay at an intersection?
Sure. So, so we'll start with the, the intersection level of service methodology begins with a count. So we count the cars going through that intersection for a two-hour period. So one, one thing that, that can happen is there may be cars queued beyond what you've counted. It's a little fuzzy on, on when you count cars for two hours and use the one hour to analyze that intersection. You know, is there latent demand outside that hour? There, there could be. You made, also, your other point was, you know, you're in that rolling queue from 202. Part of that rolling queue is, is sort of the, the response of the roadway to having vehicles stopped and you coming out of 37th and then other vehicles restarting. There's, I rerouted my commute this last week to go up and over the top instead of on East Lake Sammamish Parkway to have some of your driver experience for myself, so I know the parkway better than 228th and Sahali Way. But I could see some things going on. So the current methodology takes that one-hour count and calculates the average control delay, so that includes some of that rolling delay as well as the stop delay. So there's two, there's stop delay and control delay, what we call. It looks at all the movements and it does average them all. So when the level of service de limit of 55 seconds, I think.
Yes.
Still can remember.
55 to 80.
Yeah, so that's, that's the average, and it's a weighted average of all the vehicles going through the intersection. So it enters, you know, southbound vehicles that just fly right through have a very low delay, so that offsets the higher delay for the other movement. So it's individualized, so it's each intersection is working on its own. In order to truly model that kind of progression and a corridor better, we now have micro-simulation tools that are actually individually modeling vehicles going through virtual traffic signals up and down a corridor, and then adding up all the individual delays, which is closer to what you're experiencing but more difficult to do. So the short answer is, the current system looks at the intersections more in isolation because we don't have a rolling flow of traffic going through, and that movement delay is the control delay and the stop delay averaged over the whole intersection.
Okay. So first question then, because other jurisdictions often use intersection level of service, is that how they calculate theirs? By literally counting cars going through an intersection?
Yeah, the typical process is to do the type of counts that the city of Sammamish does, use over a two-hour period, you determine the peak hour, so the highest hour out of those two hours. Virtually every agency around here uses a software package called Syncro that was written to do the 10 pages of mathematics in the Highway Capacity Manual for level of service calculations. And then those, that output is provided as a, consistent with HCM 2010, so.
So if I can add in here, you know, Victor's talked about another approach that you can use, micro-simulation, which is much more expensive, but can do a really good job of looking at the kind of interplay of nearby intersections, of driveways, of turning movements. That's one thing. I mean, in terms of your Syncro system right now, one thing that we could look at is just extending how far the, each of the isolated intersections measure the delay. Something that I haven't looked at is, because we have DEA leading this work, is for the intersections, it depends on how long they've, they've allowed that queue to be measured. To the extent for your commute that you talked about, there's a very long queue length that you're waiting in. So that is actually potentially a very simple fix the city could look to do, is to extend kind of the, the length of measurement for those queues for isolated intersections. It would potentially show higher overall delays, could potentially show, you know, more existing deficiencies, but to Councilmember Odell's comment, potentially, it's a bit more accurate.
Yeah, and I think that's where I'm going, is that if we're not capturing the real queue, then we're not, we're doing a disservice to our residents by not really counting what's there. So, you know, and it's, it's interesting when we talk about INREX data, I'm like, I have my phone here and I have their app running, just so I can just watch. And it's, at 6:30, at 6:30 PM, and it's really nice because it's kind of that eye in the sky, and at 6:30 PM, it was red all the way from 202 all the way up to 37th, and it's, and then it was green past there, which tells me there's a problem at that intersection. So the INREX data, I think, while it's not necessarily specific to intersections, really does give you kind of that overall view of the city and what's going on, and it's very easy to see where your problems are, and they're typically related to an intersection.
So we talked a little bit about sort of still needing the engineers, so that, that level of service tool really, think of concurrency as a trigger to start the process to figure out what's going wrong somewhere and to come up with a solution. So 37th coming in the PM being red all the way to 202 is a function of a traffic signal being on a grade, because you are now stopping vehicles, they're going uphill, a proportion of those vehicles accelerate pretty slowly, if they're trucks or buses, you don't have a passing lane. And so there's a, there's a, kind of a real big inefficiency that gets compounded on because, just because you were stopping those cars. If the signal wasn't there, it would probably look much different.
Absolutely.
And so then you have some choices with INREX, because if you, if you were able to look at 37th, it's probably, you know, green and blue, because we're not stopping, you know, if you were fair, you'd stop the side street for 12 minutes to let all the cars on 228 go, because you'd be stopping eight or 10 cars for a very long period of time while a thousand cars moved. So those are other things INREX can tell you, but it doesn't, again, doesn't solve all those problems, but it, it shows us when and where. So as Kathy was talking about Issaquah Pine Lake Road, it shows us what hours of the day do we need to go out there and watch so that we see that problem? Because it's not just, it's not just volume and it's not just signal timing. 37th is a perfect example of where topography and grades are having a pretty big effect on how that intersection works.
Well, it looks the same way in the morning. I mean, the INREX thing that we had up here, as Councilmember Hornish pointed out, was July 1st on a Saturday, so at 5:00 PM. It looks very different at 8:00 AM, in the middle of the week, heading down the hill. It's all like really dark red. But I want to touch on the intersection level of service and if we were to go with that, some of my concerns. And one of my concerns is, in our currently adopted transportation element of the current plan, the intersection level of service for 202 and Sahali is a D, as in David. But in the updated numbers that we were given in July that we have not yet adopted, it changed to a C. So that means the intersection got better. But I try and sell that one to anyone who drives Sahali. And I know why it's a C, because there were some changes done at the intersection, and we're averaging everybody, and the preference is given to those on 202. But from our perspective as a jurisdiction, it doesn't do our drivers any good unless they came off 244th and are on 202 already. For those on Sahali, it's not better. It's actually probably worse, and using a level of service at the intersections and saying, okay, we're a C, is actually not helping us, because it's not a C for anybody who's leaving the city of Sammamish using Sahali. So that's a consideration and a concern. The other thing is that...
So the information, so the tool does provide directional level of service, so you can extract from that process, it provides actually the average level of service for each approach to the traffic signal. So there are some jurisdictions that go one more, one level deeper and say, I want to know how the northbound approach operates, the southbound, the eastbound, the westbound.
That would be incredibly helpful information, especially when we're looking at something like this intersection.
That is information you have already, just needs to be extracted out of the...
That would be very helpful to see, because I suspect it looks very different from the, you know, if you're exiting northbound.
Could I, could I also interject? I believe actually that that traffic going down the hill onto 202 actually did receive additional time, and so that is one of the reasons that that intersection did improve. The 202 intersection did not, coming off of 202, did not gain that time sequence. It was going down 202 if my memory serves me correctly. So that, just that little bit of tweak, I think it was a 10 to 15-second adjustment did make an impact on that.
But the bigger help would be if the left-hand turn lanes that were leading to that were much longer, because the queue flushes out, and the video that I sent you all, and I'm hitting 40 miles an hour after I just crawled down the street, you, literally, I hit 40 miles an hour trying to make the light to a free 202 at 8:00 in the morning. So there's some help that needs to be done there.
I concur with that, but we did, and working with DOT and King County did make a good improvement there.
Okay.
And it was very easy, easy done, but it also shows, if you can look for some simple things, that we can gain some.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other thing that I want to point out is that this is only using PM. And one of the intersections that our mayor likes to talk about is, in the updated version that we were given, an A. But he talks about Northeast Eighth and 244th being a huge problem for us in the morning. And if we are not incorporating the AM into this, we're missing that. And so all those folks that you talk about that get caught up by Inglewood and Rachel Carson are being completely missed in level of service at intersections. So to that end, you know, we're saying that, you know, if an AM model is desired, it would take an additional three to four months to develop. I think we absolutely have to be looking at the morning commute. And I am reluctant to, you know, it says, it's got the small dollar sign, it's got a singular dollar sign, but I asked, I said, okay, does that take into account developing this AM model? Answer was no. So the reality of developing an AM model, Jesse, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but do you want to give us a guesstimate?
You did.
No, that was on option three.
Well, I am going to look to the consultants, but I believe we're definitely in the $200 to $300,000 range, once we've done three to four months of engineering on a model.
So...
Or sell me something different, Victor.
Yeah, I think, well, again, qualifying that I'm not your modeler, it's a different company, but I have talked to him, because we used to work together. But it's for just developing, again, you have two models, you have the operation, AM operational model that you have already to know what's happening today. The predictive model is more for just that piece, without the policy to go to know what to do with it, but just the technical part is really about $50,000 for that.
Ah, better.
So...
That's better. That's like dropped a zero off from this morning.
See?
But that's just...
Wait till tomorrow.
See, we still need engineers, right?
I think you, you might need some...
How much is it for the two different?
It was, you want to repeat that, Victor? Your, the predictive model would be about?
So the predictive model's about $50,000 to be able to forecast AM volumes. It's, it's pretty rare to do, so it will not be probably as accurate as your PM peak model, but again, it's an indicator, it'll tell us what is happening. You already have the ability to measure intersection level of service for the 2016 AM counts that you did as part of the TMP. So you have that capability right now. You can, with that software, look at what happens if you extend the left turn pocket 250 feet or 1,000 feet. It'll give you an idea of what improvement you would see from that. So that tool you already have is just a matter of looking at what to do with it. And then the AM tool basically would allow us, in the transportation element update, to have a prediction of what are the future intersection levels of service during the AM peak compared to the PM peak.
In defense of my number, I, we've been talking the whole picture. So it's work with the planning commission, it's work, it's, it's pre-work with the council, making some policy decisions upfront, back to the planning commission, and then back to the council again. So please don't discount all that time and all of those meetings and public process. It probably does get us up easily into six figures.
And that, and that's fair, but I mean, 50 and, or 100 is a little bit different than 500. So my, the reason I ask the question is that, you know, I'm, I don't want to sink a half million dollars into a, you know, temporary fix on our concurrency while we continue through the TMP process. So if we can't do that, which I think, I mean, we could, as council, we could direct staff to create the AM model, but if there is not consensus to do that, I would ask, you know, what policy can we as council put in place while continuing the work on the TMP that does incorporate the AM in? Because I, like I pointed out, a lot of these intersections look a lot different in the morning than they do in the PM, and we're gonna, I, my, my real goal at the end of this is to fix problems out there, and I want to identify the problems. If we're looking just at the PM, we're missing the boat on where some of these problems are. I mean, the INREX data will play into that too, but I want to be able to extract out really where the problems are, and let's go fix them. So I'm a little reluctant to just say, okay, we'll just deal with the PM and...
I, I would say, to your answer of what things could you do, you know, in the near term, I would say kind of two things. One, directing staff to be collecting INREX data. But again, we recognize that's not on every facility in the city, and that's, that's an issue with the INREX data. The other would be to update your TIA guidelines, so that's the Traffic Impact Analysis Guidelines, and ensure that development coming in is predicting, is doing counts for both AM and PM, and doing, you know, kind of traffic, traffic impact analysis for both AM and PM. And, and that may be occurring for some developments, I don't know if it's universal.
It's, it's currently required. So in the, your near-term planning, when a development's proposed, they actually do a, what's called a horizon year, essentially when that development's complete, they do a short-term forecast. You don't need the computer model to do that, it's typically done manually. And they look at intersections fairly close to the site, so maybe within a half-mile circle. They don't look at every intersection in the city, but they do take a, a short look at those intersections that are likely to be directly impacted by that new development. And in many cases, intersections have been modified already without concurrency triggering anything. You probably saw the, maybe noticed that the left turn pockets, northbound left turn pockets at Southeast Fourth got longer. They got longer once with East Side Catholic, and they were extended again with the Metropolitan Market. So that was a function of those short-term studies saying, well, this, this incremental bit of growth is going to require this incremental modification to an adjacent intersection. So you are doing... So you are doing that now. It's just probably not as obvious. And probably I think staff could provide you a list of all those places where those incremental improvements have occurred.
I guess I just want to make sure that there's a trigger to do something related to the morning. Because if we're just, if we're going to just wholesale and take what we've got here, it's just looking at the PM. And I don't know that that's going to quite do it.
Kristi, could I, could I jump in here with just a thought? So one of the concerns that the staff have at this point is when we started the TMP process, the order that was envisioned was strategic plan first, concurrency update second. And we partially reversed that. So we're doing some concurrency work now, which is wonderful. When we get to the end of the TMP next year, there is still a possibility that that council may want to make additional updates to our concurrency program. And that, that is also great. We had a hesitation about the AM peak model, not because we don't think it's important, but because we're mindful of, although it doesn't appear I'm mindful of how much money you're spending, but I am. We're mindful of the investment we're making now in anticipation of a change you might want to make a year from now. And there is, there is a potential that you may envision after you're done with this process, a slightly different concurrency model. So that's, that's the piece. I think what you're talking about is, is good. An AM peak model would certainly benefit us. But a year from now, what if you decide to go away from that and do something different? So we just want to make sure you're aware and reminded of process.
Yeah. And that's, that's why I'm mindful of not spending a half million dollars on something that we're going to scrap in a year. I mean, I'm not trying to do that. But that's why I'm asking the question, is there something policy related then that we can fall back on that does take into account the AM? And then, as it pertains to using level of service at the intersections, if we define what that queue is coming up to a light, I think actually there could be an overlap in travel time for a corridor, which is really what option three is, is travel time. Because if your intersections are functioning well and moving cars through and they're not stacking up, you know, for a mile back down the road, then your travel times will actually increase. So I'm curious, you know, if we go through this exercise of level of service at intersections, how that actually plays out, out here? Because I think we could actually see some more benefit, assuming we make some changes to the intersections. Almost done. May have already asked this one, I'm going to ask it again, just in case I didn't. Other jurisdictions that are using LOS at intersections, do they use AM and PM? Or do they typically use one or the other?
There are some that use AM and PM. Lots in California. As I was doing research, Snowqualmie has on the books, so they do AM and PM. But by and large, most intersections do focus on their PM peak hour.
Except for that we're a very unique jurisdiction. So as far as the INRICS data goes, the little map that you pulled up is, those are basically our principal and minor arterials, which is what we're concentrating on for concurrency anyway. So perfect. Just reading through all my questions here.
Victor, what, what opportunities do we have to expand the INRICS data over time? If, if we're feeling that the data is too limited in its coverage?
That would be a conversation with INRICS. I mean, they, they can do that, but it does cost money. So it'd be possible.
So my, my next question was on the AM model again. Sorry to be hounding on that one. But you said we already have a lot of the data. Could we not define what the level of intersections would be currently with that data we have? Because right now, it's figure T8, not to be confused with table T8. That one's showing the PM intersections. If we have the data, could we get one produced that shows currently what the AM?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. That would be very helpful as well. Yeah. Except, at the end of the day, I'm just most interested in really tying in that driver experience that we talked about as being a priority, though you guys gave us a list of priorities at the very beginning of that presentation. The AM was one, and the driver experience was up there. And those were the top two things. And that is where my interest level is. So I'm done.
And next we have Councilmember Valderrama. Oh, I'm sorry. No. Now I'm avoiding you. Councilmember Hornish.
Great. Well, there was one question in the memo about asking council to direct staff to purchase the INRICS data. I think you're hearing that loud and clear. Go purchase the INRICS data. It's $15,000. Is that pretty clear from everybody else? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, he did.
I want to be, I want to make sure I understand, though. There seems to be some reluctance because it doesn't include every road. And I think Councilmember Malcho made the point. I think it includes all the arterials, the minor and principal arterials, right?
Yep.
Which is all we really need to focus on for the concurrency.
Yep.
So it should be, have everything that we need, is what I, okay. Secondly, and this is a little bit theoretical, I guess, for lack of better words. As I was going through the HCM, it basically says, option three, which is the travel time, should be used in the urban area. And it said, but the level of service, A, B, C, D, E, or the time, is all policy-driven and you get to choose. I understand all that. But it also said typically what they do is then put in to say, it's all the LOS for the time of travel, but in addition, they put on there a condition that there's a theoretical volume of each intersection in an urban area. And if that volume goes over one, then you fail, even if the LOS is being met. Can you address that? And would that be applicable for our option three? Or maybe even option two or option one?
So you used, the key word you used was theoretical. So because you could go out, I mean, you can go out and count an intersection, cars will drive through it, it'll calculate with a V over C ratio of 1.1, which means it was impossible. 110% of the cars that could, 10% more cars made through it, through the intersection in an hour than is possible. So again, these are not perfect tools. So they're, the underlying assumptions for intersections are what are saturation flow rates for the lanes. So each lane has a number of vehicles per hour, we assume, can use that lane. The typical assumption in the HCM is 1,900 vehicles per hour. That's roughly two seconds between vehicles. So do you always keep a two-second headway between your vehicle? No. There have been, you know, some research shows that in congested areas, especially in urban areas where drivers become a little more aggressive, you know, that number can become 2,200 vehicles an hour, which is why you get a calculation that says 110% of the cars made it through the intersection. Because they weren't really keeping a two-second headway or a 1.75. They were bumper-to-bumper, three-quarters of a second apart. So that one is, again, it's, it is theoretical because over and over again, you will see intersections that operate at over a V over C of one. So it's, it's not desirable. But you asked the question, you know, we would want to ask the question, how often does that happen? Again, that's where INRICS helps, is that kind of situation. That's indicated by a low speed. So when you have, when you reach LOS E or F, or you reach a V over C of greater than one, then you typically have speeds below 10 miles an hour. So again, INRICS points us to that answer as well.
As well.
So but there's a, you know, there's a tremendous amount of variability. Some drivers, you know, you'll, there'll be one driver that leaves, you know, a five-second gap between them and the next car. And that now just degraded your level of service because one driver was not aggressive enough.
I appreciate that. But I want to ask, whether or not it exceeds one, or whether or not exceeds 1.1, 1.2, would that not be a policy issue?
It can be. And some jurisdictions have selected 1.1.
As the fail-
As the failure.
Threshold.
Yeah. So yeah, F, the grade, there's a, there's, in the next few years, you'll probably see the A through F grade go away. Because the, the F is really, it's, you know, it still works. It's not pleasant, but the intersection still works. It's not actually failing. So V over C ratios are just total seconds of delay, rather than me saying, well, that, because to me, it's not that helpful. That intersection operates LOS D. Wouldn't it be more helpful if I told you the average delay at that intersection is 55 seconds and the average delay at that intersection is 32 and the average delay at that one is 80?
I'm not sure it would.
Versus I tell you they're all D. You know, but there's a lot of huge variation in what D is. So.
But I, I go back to my question. Is that not something that maybe we want to incorporate into whatever option we choose?
You could, I think.
And the reason I want to drill down on it a little bit more is because then we are designing something from a theoretical basis. And I know that there's, reality is different than theory. But then we can point to, look, we've done what we can do to try to get there for our streets in Samamish, right?
All right. Again, again, if you, if I were trying to explain to the public, you know, what's working and not working, if I say you're going to be delayed two minutes or you're going to go 10 miles an hour from here to here, that probably is more helpful than to say you're, you're experiencing a V over C ratio of 1.15 and so it's, it failed.
But, but, but let's not get wrapped around the axle of, of trying to explain the concurrency to our, our citizens because they don't understand the current one either. So I don't know if we want to really adopt one that they do understand. But I don't want to get caught up into that. I, I want to get something that makes sense, that will address the user experience as the bottom line. But it may be more theoretical and it may be somewhat mechanical. And it may be somewhat arbitrary as to what LOS we choose. But that's what we are elected to do. So, okay. So I would suggest, maybe we consider including that at least in option three, because that's what the HCM kind of clearly says is their standard recommended for an urban. But I would also posit that maybe we include it for option two or one if we go there, as to a, a V over C of, and maybe it's 1.1 to your point, that it can't work. But we know that that's really saturated at that point and it truly is a failure, so to speak. So I'd like to throw that option out. So having said that, I guess my comments are, I really still like option three, which is the total time travel. And I think that is the only option that I would really back 100%. Now, having said that, I understand where we're at and what we need to do. We need to decide something. And I think two or one could work as a, at least an interim with the acknowledgement and the head nod that, okay, this is an interim, but we're going to move to option three. So I can't say that emphatically enough from me personally. Option three, I think, is the place we have to go eventually. Do we need to get there in the next six months, nine months? Maybe not. And between two and one in that regard, I think two's probably best. I think, I think the delay at the intersections gives you a proxy of how the traffic is really moving. I'm a little concerned and I'd like to understand better about extending the queue, as Councilmember Malcho highlighted. And, and the directional delays, to see those too. I think that would be very interesting to see and maybe adopt that as a policy for an interim solution for option two, until we can get to option three after the TMP. My thoughts. Whether or not we need an AM, I'm going to address that in all three of the options, because I don't think it really fits in the other ones. Yes, we need to. Again, I got the caveat, though. If we're trying to adopt an interim, I don't know if I'd, number one, want to spend the money, although 50,000 doesn't sound that bad to me, to, to do so. And I have to ask, if we were to do an option two as an interim, on the view that we were eventually going to adopt something more comprehensive, which might be option three or something else, wouldn't that model that we build for option two AM still be applicable for an option three if that's what we were to adopt eventually?
I would say generally yes. You know, again, how the development community goes about forecasting kind of travel time growth in the future. But there are other communities that do it. The travel model can be used as a proxy.
So the issue is not so much about spending the money and not, and then throwing it away in a year later. It's more about the timing to do the AM model.
The AM model, yeah, the AM model, again, provides you that forecast of traffic volume, but not operation. So that's a separate process. Currently, you use a tool called Synchro. In order to predict travel time in the future, that's where you get into the multiple hundreds of thousands. Then you have to build this micro-simulation model that's much more refined than the Synchro model. And that, then you can take that predicted future volume and it will predict future travel time because it's capable of essentially tracking every car through the system.
So, but if we can actually build it in two or three months and that's, and the real issue is the delay, not the cost, I'm kind of inclined to wait another two or three months, even though I'd like to get something in the interim sooner rather than later, as to my thoughts. So, so I want to move then to the more about the do-something inputs. Yes, yes, yes. Funding, the, the minor intersection improvements. How much are we looking at to set aside for the funding?
Oh, you want to get another number from me?
Okay, I won't look at you. Who else? Lyman?
I think, just for context, we put, Steve, where are you? We put about 225,000 this year for flashing yellow project alone. So-
That was in '17, right?
Right. That was just for flashing yellows. That was a type of intersection work. You could set aside something around that for other types of intersection work going forward. And certainly with INRICS tools in our toolbox, we would come to you likely, if another situation arose and we didn't have funding, to say, hey, this has happened, we have a project, would you consider funding it using contingency or other things? So those are-
That number seems reasonable. Okay. Then moving into the seed money for outside of the city limits. 202 Sahali Way, I'm on board with. I actually like the suggestion of the East Lakes Samamish Parkway and 202 as well. Because I think those are more closer to the heart of our experience of our drivers. I question the I-90 Front Street. And I guess I would have to, I better understand that intersection, that far removed, how much impact it really has on us getting out of Samamish.
And I apologize. I think the memo misrepresented our intent there. Our intent with that was just to point to another study that's happening regionally, that we will be involved in on the planning side, just staff participating and monitor it. And if there is an opportunity to partner, that would probably be an appropriate decision down the road, not right now.
So we wouldn't set aside any seed money for that. It's just, it's just an allocation of time.
Yeah, that was mischaracterized in the memo. I apologize.
Okay. That's it for me. Thanks.
Very good. Councilmember Valderrama.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, the time that you've taken on this. So I've got a bunch of questions. I'll go through them, one option at a time. And one of the slides that you had on option one as a con, you had said, using the most recent HCM methodology would increase existing deficiencies. So would that entail then, and incurring the cost for fixing those deficiencies that we had now done by changing that by our citizens, since that would not go to impact fees under my understanding?
Correct.
Okay. I don't like that as much anymore.
[laughter]
Second, we talk about user experience and the AM model, not this, which is beneficial. However, from my understanding and what's been presented here, one, the AM is being looked at at the developments as they are being done currently. So they are being considered into it. Two, well, there was an analysis done, there was only three intersections that were off in the AM that weren't in the PM. But since most of the nation uses the PM because of that, we actually could end up in the situation of worse if we went to the AM alone. And finally, I guess a question, given the experience that most of the country has now, and I understand the vast majority have moved to the PM, for that user experience is, would there be a discernible difference to the average driver who doesn't understand any of this, by us going to a AMPM or AM model?
I, I'm going to put that what you measure is what you get. And so what, kind of a truism I like to say is that what you measure is what you get. And so if you do choose to measure AM as a part of your standard, that will necessitate potentially some capital improvements that facilitate movements in the AM. So in intersection, I think we've talked about a few tonight, intersections that operate just fine during the PM peak hour. But if we start measuring the AM peak hour around school time and we recognize that there are some, some issues there, and you're applying a standard, you may start identifying projects that would be, that would facilitate that AM movement, which would be added to your capital plan. Now, I would caution and say that, you know, just because there's a deficiency in the AM, that doesn't mean that none of that project can be funded by impact fees. A portion of that project, which is attributable to that deficiency, can't be charged to impact fees. But-
Only to the new development and what they have now caused. But once we identify an existing deficiency, they don't contribute to that. They only go to the next one that they would be adding to, is my understanding. They only go to the next one that they would be adding to, is my understanding.
No, they, they would pay, they can still pay their proportional share of the surplus capacity. So you, you fix the existing deficiency, but there's still room for more cars in that intersection.
That's correct.
So existing residents pay for that first increment of the project, but you can charge impact fees for the remaining part that was done on the portion of, I think, 228.
That's right. That they have now caused, but the deficiencies you've identified, the base ones, our, our citizens would be paying.
So a percentage of those improvements.
Today because we've just changed the methodology and we're going to be taxing our citizens for that.
Correct. You, you are, you are correct that there would be a higher level of existing deficiency, although as, as Victor was stating, it's, it's, there's math. Us engineers, we go behind our computers, we get very excited and we do this math and we might come out and say, well, you know, 47% improvement is an existing deficiency and the remainder can be assessed on impact fees. But I guess what I would say is if these driver experience challenges are significant enough that they merit being on your project list, then this is a way that you can get those projects by policy onto your project list as part of the TMP. If, if you're providing us guidance that, hey, we should be building our project list to address both AM and PM peak hour issues, we will certainly build a project list around that. So I guess, yes, there's a push and pull that it costs more money, but if that's the driver experience you're, you're desiring to provide to your constituency, that's kind of the choice.
Kendra, at least if we're told that there's only three intersections that have a difference, most of these then our citizens will tell you, yesterday I was driving on it, it is fine, now I'm told it's bad and I'm going to get taxed additional money for it. So that's a real concern to me as we're looking at this, going forward for that user experience here. Option two, we talked about the, the queue versus the real queue and there was a reference made to what do the other cities do? Because one of the things that we have obviously is what's being done in the industry standard. So how do other cities handle it and what we compare ourselves to?
I'm chuckling and then I haven't done a regional assessment of queue lengths. What I would say is that I, I think that it's a good policy that we should go look at the city's existing Syncro model, make sure that those queue lengths that are being measured are adequate. I would say it's all over the board. Samamish, I think you've got a great staff, you've had a good consulting team over the number of years that have done a very diligent job. I can say that because I have not been a part of that consulting team. I, I would suspect that, that your work has been more rigorous than most other communities, but certainly there are some communities that do micro simulation, so kind of all over the spectrum.
And do they see that it's beneficial to do, or cost beneficial to do the micro simulation?
I guess it is, it is more expensive. To the extent that you've got some issues that can only be detected by micro simulation, if it's an important enough issue, I think, you know, that, that probably would be a good cost approach, although I would say by starting with the INREX data, you're essentially going to be looking at those issues and being able to identify those hotspots that could also be identified by, by micro simulation.
Going to the INREX data that you were just mentioning, and I'm supportive of getting the INREX data to take a look at the first year, but in talking to conversations, and I think it was Transpo that had told us, this has been meeting with different council members, that much of that same data is actually being collected currently by Victor and the analysis that's being done, or could be modified quickly to even look at speeds of data and that. Is that correct?
INREX gives you speed.
Sorry?
Yeah.
Okay. I know INREX gives speeds, but I understand that if you had put another tune down.
To what you do now. What you do now is you count cars on an annual basis for 24 hours, for a week, and then during the peaks at several, at 50, 60 intersections. INREX can provide you with, you know, any time slice you want, going back about five years at the high level resolution and even farther at lower resolutions. So one of the challenges, when you mentioned, you know, well, this intersection sure doesn't look like it operated at C to me last time I drove it. Well, because we analyzed it with counting it for one day back in the spring of 2016 and traffic volume, you know, when you reach the, the intersection of, oh, pun, no pun intended, D and E, when you, when intersections begin to get towards capacity, a 5 or 10% fluctuation in volumes on one leg or the other, if the signal timing isn't immediately adjusted, will trip you up from C to D to E. So the beauty of INREX is you have, you know, billions of data points, not just one little time slice. So we can provide, or the current, your current system provides estimates, your forecasting model has some, you know, it's calibrated to those counts so you can infer some speeds from it, but it's, it's nothing like the, the hundreds of thousands of data points that you have for every street in town. So that, to me, that's a huge benefit is you can see not only where, but when problems are occurring. So as you saw on that map, the yellow and orange parts, you know, were this part of the day over here, but all day over here and a little bit over there. It really allows you to focus where those problems are.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Option three, again, the concern on the policy standards, how do we develop those? That's an issue that has to be looked at. There was some mention of the East Lakes Samamish Parkway, both on this and on the next issue that we're going to be addressing as far as short-term fixes. East Lakes Samamish Parkway is a very unique situation because in discussions eight years ago with King County, with Wasdaw and with Redmond, all three of them came to us and said, hey, you're not going to be able to get more travel time cars off faster. In fact, that originally when they were looking at that project, they were talking about it being the traffic improvement. At that point, the city then admitted that there would not be an improvement on travel time. They then started to call it a beautification and pacing project and to change the name of it because they couldn't get it. So we have some limitations when you're going to Redmond because of the light up there and how long that light can handle and it's being optimized. That King County says that they knew that before we were ever incorporated and hence they were looking at their real throughput taking place had we not incorporated on Sahali Way. And so how that gets fit into this process would be beneficial to take a look at.
Robero, could I just, I, we didn't talk about the Parkway during our presentation. We probably should have. When we change our concurrency model, we will have to have a special policy discussion related.
Exactly. You have to give a waiver to the Parkway.
To the Parkway.
So we don't spend the money. Remembering again that when that project was done, and I guess this was now seven years ago, it was considered the most wasteful project in the city's history.
Eight years ago.
Eight years ago. Thank you. Eight years ago, it's considered the most wasteful project in the city's history. Travel time, and again, going back to user experience, given that we are an island, a landlocked island here, and we are dependent upon working on that, my concern is also in looking at this on travel time, is that really, assuming this exercise is done in six to nine months, we're going back to business as usual, cars race and as things start to happen following the new methodology, travel time's not going to change much because we still hit King County, we hit Wasdaw, we hit Redmond, and Redmond has no incentive. And we can say all we want of, hey, let's work and cooperate on that, but they are so swamped and have such deficiencies in their own city. And I know there was some mention of getting the Department of Commerce in here. I haven't found anybody in either staff nor fair peers nor the master builders who said they've ever been able to see Department of Commerce to wear their UN blue helmets and get some results that were positive for us. So I am a little skeptical as to being careful that we're not setting an expectation for our citizens that no matter how much money we spend, we're going to be able to really address. And most of them won't understand that minute difference that we're measuring. So that's something that I am concerned about in how we look at this and we're going to have to have a discussion on that. On, as far as the next steps, I have a problem that the way that we're doing this, the council had a long deliberation and had decided that before we do Sahali or those projects, we were going to do the TMP. And as you mentioned before, ideally, the TMP should be coming before this. We had said as a body that we wanted to have a thoughtful process to look at it and come back with our priority list. No doubt these projects will be on it. In what order and how was to be determined and were specifically mentioned. Now we're saying, no, let's rush these forward. And there's three things that are wrong with it. First of all, it's putting the cart before the donkey on it. I mean, that's what was already decided. Second of all, is we're looking at all these funds going out when this council has decided they didn't want to look and address the fiscal structural imbalance and the budget. That was our first priority in January that we've now postponed to the next council. We have another council coming in and not only, you know, it goes back, you know, Council Member Hornish had said, let's give a nod to option three. We can't give a nod to option three because the next council comes in, in a couple of meetings from now and they're going to have to revisit this whole thing and be brought up to speed. So this council can only talk about the interim. It's the next council, which is the majority of this council that's going to have to talk about what's the long-term solution that's going to be looked at, or else we run a chance of getting the staff to do this and the next council say, no, we don't want that out there. And that's setting the staff up for problems that I don't think is fair for them. So we need to look at the realistic portion of that and how are we going to be funding all of these issues without really knowing how these play into our budgets? No doubt they have to be funded, but how they're going to be funded, when they're going to be funded? We've talked about kicking projects down the road. That was the whole purpose of the TMP, to be able to look at that and say, what's the sequencing that's going to be taken in a prioritized, thoughtful manner? So I have an issue with doing, and suddenly again, another knee-jerk reaction, and especially when these are going to start, the designs and all on the watch really of the next council, which is in a couple of meetings. As of tomorrow, we have four new council elects. So I, I do have some issue with how this is going about. It's not, in my mind, a thoughtful process and not taking into consideration the realities of a new council and obligating monies that neither do we know we really have because we haven't taken this year the time to address it, nor should we be doing that, given that as of tomorrow, you'll have four new council elects that have to weigh in on these decisions in one way or the other, whether now or in January when seated. So I do think that all of these will come out on that list. Where they come out, how they come out will be something to be looked at and needs to be looked at by us. That's it for now. I'll come back with the second round that's coming on.
Well, I have to say that Councilmember Jaren has been very patient and he's next.
May I interject and just share with the audience our apologies? The only way to get this back working is to restart everything, which means the microphones go down. So we've elected to continue meeting and I apologize, we've lost our visuals.
And the sound is off, I understand, when you do that.
Yeah, we'll lose our sound and everything.
So the home viewing audience is in suspense.
They are.
They can't hear us?
Actually, I think they can hear us, they can't see you.
But if we reset, we would lose the microphones and everything.
They lost the sound, is what I understand. They reset last time.
Who wasn't aware of that?
Hopefully that's a discussion item for the next council.
Councilmember Jaren, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lot of the points have been made. A lot of them are very good points and I, I agree with some that were presented and then I hear our next speaker and I say, well, that sounds good. Tom Hornish, who brought up option three, I had discounted option three, not because the Highway Capacity Manual says you should use option three, but looking at Vancouver as the, as the poster child for option three. And what do you accomplish? Their concurrency program deals with the travel time, but when they calculate impact fees, they don't pay any attention to the travel time. They have a bunch of projects and then they charge you per trip generated. So if you build a house, they assume you have generated 10 trips and if it's $153 per trip, then the impact fee is $1,500. By the way, their impact fee is only about one-eighth of our impact fee. And the Highway Capacity Manual, correct me if I'm wrong, but I couldn't find any discussion in there about impact fees. So, so furthermore, I read in the Highway Capacity Manual that we do not consider safety. And as I pointed out to you before, we should be considering safety in our urban arterials. So I don't see the Highway Capacity Manual as the King James version of designing our roads or any other version. So I went to the Highway Safety Manual and the Highway Safety Manual tells you how to design a road safely, but it doesn't tell you necessarily about the safety to someone walking along the road, depending on the shoulder width. So I think we're out there having to kind of do our own thing. Now, in this discussion this evening, we talked, Victor talked about the operational model, which gives you AM and PM, the, the Syncro. And then we have our very sophisticated model, which predicts how we'll be doing in the future in 2030, 2035. But in recent months, what we've seen is that the, the future, it starts now and it's changing rapidly. We were talking about autonomous vehicles. A few years ago, we were talking about that being the far distant future. Now we're talking about it in the next five or 10 years before your predictive model for 2035. So what you might have is a very refined model, which may show little differences between AM and PM in 2035, being totally overwhelmed by a whole different technology at that time. We may have autonomous shuttles going around the city. We may have some schools shut down that right now are causing major AM problems. If you look at the history of Bellevue, you notice that when the city matured, they shut down a good number of schools. That's why a lot of our schools have portables now because they recognize that the number of students is going to vary and if it's peaking now, you don't want to build for the capacity now, just like we don't want to necessarily build for that peak hour capacity and be totally overbuilt for the rest of the time. So, so that's a couple of points. Another point is when we were talking about capacity, I believe the Highway Capacity Manual defines capacity as level of service E. So as Victor said, you can indeed have more than capacity going through an intersection. Okay, next. Oh, and when we talk about doing investments in our neighboring municipalities or King County, we've already done that. We have a record of that. When the Southeast 43rd and Isqapine, East Lakes Samamish Parkway roundabout was put in, we contributed $10,000 to the design work on that, knowing that most of our citizens are going to be impacted by that. So I am supportive of doing, spending money outside of our municipality, which helps our, our commuters. Now, getting back to INREX, I totally agree with what I think I hear a consensus on the council that we should use INREX data. I think that here, talking about interim concurrency, I would suggest that option two makes more sense if we just do intersection and then supplement it with the INREX data. The whole goal of this is to decide where we have problems in our transportation facilities and which ones we can fix and then have the engineers tell us how much it would cost and time-wise, and then have our finance director tell us where we're going to get the money. So I would suggest that, I would encourage us not necessarily to blindly buy the INREX data, but I would love to have a demonstration at council, have INREX people come to us and tell us what they can provide and, and show us something better than the blurry graphs that we see up there. So, so I would suggest, I would support option two plus INREX data. And I might add that if you want information on the side, side roads that INREX isn't supplying, we do have that radar, recording radar trailer, which you can put on a road and, and get the record for 24 hours or how long will it record for before you have to download it? Cheryl, do you know? Well, that's okay. But I mean, you can move that around the city and see. We wanted to do that to figure out where we can tell the police to set up their radar trap. I'm sorry, their.
Revenue source.
The revenue source.
Unfortunately, we don't get enough.
And then again, talking about how much, I do support the near-term capital project options. We, it's not like we're pulling them out of the hat. We've talked about all of these. We talked about the possibility of spending money outside the city to extend that pocket going down to 202, the two-lane pocket, extending it up the hill so Christie doesn't have to go around the corner at 40 miles an hour.
Forty miles per hour.
Scared me just watching the, watching the video. So that also brings up the question of, about the revenues and we're having our budget adjustment coming up and I would encourage us to think in terms of possible revenue sources. sources that we could institute sooner rather than later to cover these transportation facilities. We did hear from the community. The community said, "Hey, we would support bonding." I don't say all the community said that, but we heard that from a lot of people, that they would support bonding to get some of these projects done faster. This concurrency issue, we're going to make it harder to pass concurrency, which means we're going to have to have more money for more projects. So I suggest that we think in terms of the so-called multi-legged stool of revenue for our city, which, right now, we have balanced on one leg, and that's property taxes. We have a little bit in a couple other areas, but we have nothing from utility tax. And over the years, our staff had suggested that we implement a utility tax, and we've resisted it, and we also haven't taken the property tax increase for eight years. I think it's time for us to do something. I'd like to see that discussion at our budget adjustment time.
Tomorrow.
We'll have that opportunity tomorrow.
Yep. Well, that's all for now. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Huckabee.
Yes. A quick question and then a comment. I thought that Deputy Mayor Malcho's comment on the, where does the queue start for an intersection? That's a really appropriate question, because I see that also on the south end, in terms of where the cars start backing up, because Isco Plain Lake Road intersection is all fouled up. So, but from the INRICS data, can we actually go back and, on the historical data, start the queue lanes further back or shorter? Because obviously, in the morning, I live on southeast Ford, if I have a 7:00 meeting or an appointment in Issaquah, it takes me 25 minutes to get through that intersection so I can go down southeast 43rd. At 9:00 in the morning, it takes 10 minutes. So those queue lanes are really important, because one or two intersections are just literally that we're going to get up. So does the historical INRICS data provide that information to us, or do we have, can we only do that in the go-forward?
No. Well, yeah, INRICS is primarily historic. I mean, it does not, it's very, it has some very limited predictive, you know, so it can generally tell you that intersection is always congested in these hours, but that's what it's designed for. What has been happening in that dataset, when you buy a year's worth of data, there's some analytic tools that are, it's called a hotspot identifier, so it actually looks at where are speeds or congestion, where's congestion getting worse the fastest? So what's the rate of the problem growing? So rather than us fiddling through a whole bunch of traffic counts, trying to figure out where's the problem, it actually identifies on a map. This area is getting worse and worse faster, so you should probably focus on that. But it's not a predictive tool, it's a historical tool. But since it's historic, the other, the way I would encourage you to use it is make it available to the community in sort of a travel demand management, say, "Well, don't try to make that trip at 7:00 AM, because it takes 45 minutes at 7:00 AM, and it takes 30 minutes at 7:45, and it takes 25 minutes at 10:15." So we kind of tend to conserve every other resource we have in terms of water conservation and conserving electricity. We don't try to conserve or maximize the capacity of our transportation system. So that's the other use for INRICS, is an educational tool, to inform people of when they can avoid that queue. Instead of hitting it every single day and being frustrated, know that, okay, if I adjust my behavior by 30 minutes or an hour, I won't experience that.
Or you could do like I do, jump over to 212, and drive there instead of 228. Especially with Snake Hill, that's a good strategy.
Which, what, there are a lot of apps for your phone that are telling you to do just that. It's generating a lot of concerns, frankly, though. There are communities where some of those applications that are directing you on a shorter path through a residential neighborhood on, you know, non-arterial streets, those neighborhoods aren't really thrilled about commuters avoiding arterial congestion through their neighborhood. So there are some challenges with that.
I understand that. And just to comment, if Don wants to start talking about raising revenue, I would suggest that we talk about the Transportation Benefit District, which would raise money specifically for a particular purpose, and if that purpose is increasing intersection flow-through, that, to me, would be a direct relationship rather than a utility tax or some other tax that doesn't go away. The Transportation Benefit District can be for short-term, and again, for specified issues.
Okay, next we have Councilmember O'Dell.
Mr. Mayor, I haven't heard from you yet.
I was saving myself for the end.
No, no, it doesn't work that way.
Victor, you know, I'm very glad I'm retired. I can do what you suggested, and as I've re-timed most of my travel to midday to avoid this problem. But this morning, I had to get to City Hall for a 9:00 AM meeting, and I rolled out of my residential area to my intersection at northeast 28th and Sahali Way, turned right with barely, you know, a pause. I tried the same thing this afternoon at 5:50, 5:10. It took me four minutes to do a right turn, simply because there were no gaps in the I'm also delighted to hear that you say that the intersections can be measured directionally as well, when I think we need to do that, because as much as most cities use, only use PM peak, I would maintain that most cities don't have the traffic directionality or imbalance in flows that we do. Therefore, I think we absolutely have to have both morning and PM peak, or we're going to be missing something. You can average something so that you have no problem anywhere, but in reality, if your intersection in one direction has an LOS of F, and in the other direction has an LOS of A, it comes out as a C, so you're fine. No, you're not fine. You're just hiding the problem. So we really need to get onto that. We are an island. People leave, and people come back. Unfortunately, because we are an island, they only have so many choices, three to the north and two or three to the south. There are none to the east or west. So we have to work within what we have. Jesse, to your point on the low-hanging fruit issue, when Kathy was talking, she was mentioning the intersection at 228th and Issaquah Pine Lake. One of the big problems there is the Pine Lake Middle School, as Kathy repeatedly pointed out. They have this crossing that is maybe 100 yards south of the intersection that regularly creates havoc with traffic flow. Now, maybe there should be a discussion with the school about, do we trade the crossing guards to sequence things a little better? Or maybe we shut down that crossing completely and ask them all to use the signalized intersection? I suspect that'll wind up with a number of people simply running across the road. I see that all the time at Safeway. By the way, there was some guy with a dog sitting in the middle of the island, down by Safeway, in the dark tonight. I saw the dog, I didn't see him to the last minute.
That wasn't a candidate, was it?
No, it was not a candidate. No signs, no signs.
No sign on the side of the dog.
Not going to touch that one.
Anyway, perhaps there's some low-hanging fruit out there we can do by working with the schools. If we can't solve it, then another solution is to do what we're talking about doing on Issaquah Falls City with the junior high out there, and that is building a bridge across the road to get these kids across the street. If that means going across, then that might be a cheaper solution than trying to widen the road. I would prefer to find any other option if I could, but, you know, maybe that's something that the school district could help share the cost on, because frankly, they're creating the problem by not running buses.
Yeah, correct.
So there's things like that as well, but I think there's ample fruit for conversation. I know that the Lake Washington School District has asked for a joint meeting with the new council, and I hope that the Issaquah School District will sit down with us on this as well. The fact that Pine Lake Middle is probably going to double in size makes the problem even more pressing. And as Kathy pointed out, there's going to be a new elementary and senior high school down at the south end of town, just over the boundary line, but it will still be serving our people and affecting our traffic. We need to get on that. One thing I haven't heard in any of this discussion is the issue of risk of the three Option one is kind of the known thing with some tweaks, and probably, to my mind, the least riskiest. Option two has some interesting aspects to it, but you could almost make a case that you can combine option one and two and do a hybrid of those two. Option three will take, at best, six to nine months, maybe longer. I come from an industry where we try to do a lot of technical advances in short order. The history of it has been that usually, they don't happen in short order. I don't, can't remember the last time an airplane program has come out on schedule. Very few of them do. Most computer projects don't come out on schedule. So take the timelines with a grain of salt, and I would gravitate toward low-risk versus high-risk. It's something to be thinking about if we want to come up with something we can implement relatively quickly. Cost is also, I think Jesse's being very correct in being a little cagey on the cost, because we don't know what the costs are. It's kind of a parade or chart of low-risk to high-risk in terms of the cost. But to be able to pin it down to whether it's $700,000 or $750,000 at this point is ridiculous. We just are not there yet, with an awful lot further discussion. The big thing here is the, there are two things. One is driver experience. If all I did, like I used to do, was drive off of Samamish Plateau in the morning, come back home at 5:00 at night or 7:00 at night, and not have the other times of the day, that would be my driver experience. Having a lot more flexibility time-wise now, you do know that there are times of the day where you can have the whole road to yourself. I, same time, I shudder when I heard Victor talk about 1,900 cars an hour or more, and headway separations of one second. You know, I can just see the cops trying to clear all the rear-end accidents under that scenario. So that actually would depress your traffic flow rather than increasing it over a period of time. We need to design a system to save. Don brought out the safety issue. And by what we've been doing so far, I think has been hiding some of the issues that are around. The, and I think most of the drivers who are in the morning and afternoon picks will tell you that what we're doing is covering up what's reality here. As far as the impact fee situation goes, we have six years to spend impact fees once they're collected. The impact fees are paid at the time of occupancy, which means that the, or sale, which means that the problems are already on your doorstep before you get paid for it. So retroactively, I think we can build a case that going back and fixing some of these problems is at least partially impact fee funding able. I'll leave that one to the experts, but that would be my position. Right now, I'm still leaning toward option one with all the changes. I think taking the non-motorized element out separately is the correct thing to do, and does give us more flexibility in a sense. But I would be interested in looking at the intersection level of service element as well. I do agree that this one, that we may be into a two-step process here. We may be doing something that's relatively quick, so we can get the benefit of it quicker. But ultimately, we may want to start over again, but that'll be for another council, several councils removed for now. Thank you.
Great. Deputy Mayor Malcho, if you could ask your question, then I'm going to take my time, and I think we should summarize, and maybe we can beat the IT companies and the airplane manufacturers and get out of here on time tonight.
All right, I'll talk quick. So it's been said before, but I didn't say it, and I would definitely support directional delay and looking at that. That is absolutely critical. I did not speak to those near-term capital project options, so I wanted to touch on those. I support looking at the Sahali Way project. I was one of the people that said no to it before, but I said no to it because it was based in table T8, which we've all decided is not where we want to be anymore. It was based on curb gutter sidewalk and a median, which didn't really add any capacity. And what we're looking at now is not gross improvements to it, but it says here, intersection improvements. And if you look at the background figure, T8, the intersections are CFF, CFF, CC. So there's some problems on Sahali, so I support looking at those intersections. And it says, "And added capacity." But that hasn't really been defined, so I'm not really sure what staff's thinking about added capacity. I don't know if that's at the intersections or if you're thinking something else, but that wasn't defined here.
This gets into, "Don't let the deputy city manager speak at this point, because she'll say something." Tomorrow afternoon, we are bringing our consulting teams together to talk about some early concepts, and we want to bring those back to you.
Okay.
Because added capacity, depending on how far we would take it, would certainly involve a financial component of that discussion.
Absolutely, sure. As far as Issaquah Pine Lake Road, I know I've spoken extensively on how long that's been sitting on our TIP. I definitely support looking at doing that. I think you brought up the fact that it might make us grant-eligible if we already have some design work, and I'm certainly supportive of that. And then, as far as the seed money and prioritization to Highway 202 and Sahali Way intersection, I would hope that we're looking beyond just the intersection, and that would also include those queue lanes going further up the hill. And the I-90, I know I expressed some concern about that, but if we're not actually putting any money into it, then I'm fine there, but as I brought up in the meeting earlier today, 202 and East Lake Samamish Parkway, which I know has been discussed already here this evening, in consideration of the Redmond's Marymore sub-area plan and the immense amount of dwelling units that will be going in there that will inevitably affect our drivers.
Great. I think, as has been said earlier, most things have been covered. There's been some really good comments tonight as we go through this. So I'm going to start with one of my comments that I've made a number of times, transit. I know it doesn't seem like it fits here, but we have a crossover right now, I think, in our discussion between concurrency and the TMP. The TMP was supposed to look at our entire transportation system. I think that we're very short on transit. East Lake Samamish Parkway came up tonight. I think we need to look at East Lake Samamish Parkway again. I know there's a gentleman in the public audience here tonight that I happened to agree with when he said, "I didn't really like spending my money on light rail, but I want to get all the, I want to get my money's worth for it." And I think the connection on the north end of East Lake Sam, for all we know, if we work with Redmond, there is, will be some relief on that intersection at 202. I don't mean just because people are taking transit, but maybe there'll be a diversion road that could actually be put up somewhere somehow through that section if we started talking to them. So I really do think that, I know I'm crossing over with the TMP and the concurrency, but the fact of the matter is, East Lake Sam is something that we should talk about. So I'll go to the Sahali Way project, all in on us looking at the intersections there. I think we need to do something in the north end. I also want to say that on 202, again, I won't probably get to do this again, but compliments to the Legislative Committee that we had with then-Mayor Jaren and Councilmember Valderrama and myself. We actually lobbied for the study on 202, and I'm actually very encouraged to see that we'd be looking at possibly fixing that intersection ourselves if we couldn't get help from the county. No sense in letting our citizens suffer in the north end of the city if nothing is ever going to get done by anyone else. So I'm anxious to see what So I'm anxious to see what happens with that study and how we can work with them to help expedite that. In terms of the concurrency model, all three of these, it seems to me, it keeps coming to, it's a policy decision. All of these have a methodology or a formula that they come up with. They're all theoretical. I think the very last one on three, even speed, as much as we look at it, it's still a theoretical number that we're coming up with. And then we have to base our policy on that. Is that correct? It's not a finite number that we're going to come up with when you were, when Victor was using the 1.1% or 10% extra. It's not, there's not going to be actually a science on those intersections that we can, that can make our final decision in the end. The council's going to have to make a policy decision based on the tools that we are provided. And it sounds like none of them are going to actually be perfect. So maximizing our transportation system is, again, something Victor just said. I think it was important. Our schools may change. Transit is going to change. The INREX data, really, for the amount of money that INREX is, I think we, this council has actually asked for it several times in the past. Based on money, we were thinking it was going to be $100,000 or $150,000. But for $15,000, it would be really beneficial for us to be able to use that data. Victor, again, kudos on, maybe we could publish that data and our own population would figure out alternate routes themselves based on the information that we were providing them.
They'll all take the same optimal route.
You know, I have to say, since 244th has opened up, I rarely drive on 228th. If I'm heading south, since I have that choice exactly.
Don't thank you. Stay off of East Lake, too.
Right. No, I haven't, I haven't been able to get from that yet, although they slowed me down with Inglewood Hill. So I'm for getting INREX. In terms of an option, if this is not going to be the final decision that we're making, because maybe option three would be something that would be in play, I say keep it as simple as possible. And option two, I think, was the one that looked like it was the simplest, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I throw out maybe some things, some items where we may have common ground tonight and see if we can agree?
Yes, one last comment that I want to make is this, you made me think of this. Decoupling multimodal from our concurrency. It's interesting. But I do have some trepidation that I would throw out there. And that is sidewalks as a priority has been shifted several times in the last three years. It's gone from parks and trails to now it's a sidewalk on its own. And TMP is going to give us guidance on the safety of sidewalks. And as much as T8 as a guidance was, it connected sidewalks and safety to our road capacity. So while that may not have been perfect, if we're going to go to a simple option, I would have to say, as the TMP progresses, it's very important for this next council, and I would say for the staff, to make sidewalks a priority in the discussions. And don't, don't wait, let's not wait another three years. I haven't, any public traffic open house that we have, I have run into a mother or a father, a family, that has pointed out some area in the city that their kids are walking to school and it's not safe. And so really, you know, we've been, we've been kicking this one down for a while. So I'm sorry to emphasize that so much. But if we're going to delink or uncouple it from the capacity in our roads, then it needs to be a priority in and of itself. That is something that is moved forward as well. So those are my comments.
I have a question following that for Jesse. My understanding is, even if we decouple, the city plans to be very cognizant of how we get to complete streets and that we're not putting at risk our impact fees to be able to fund those. Is that correct?
That is correct. And that was actually on my list to recap here. So maybe an attempt at where we have some common ground? Item number one, top priority, Seahawks need a new kicker.
Taken care of that yet today?
I don't know. Okay, in all seriousness. So I didn't hear a lot of yeses for option number three. But what I did hear is we need to be mindful of how we use speed to inform future policy decisions. And this still needs to be a part of the TMP work going forward. So we may have a future concurrency policy that's speed-based, or we may have a hybrid. And it sounds like you're open to that. I heard some yeses to option number two and number one. So here's what I'm going to suggest. We need to come back and we need to explore a little bit more about the AM model, tell you what that's going to look like, what it's going to cost. Do we build a model? Do we look at policies and procedures, or is it both? We need to take a look and report out to you on how our traffic impact assessment works so you can see what we're doing when development comes in, even though it's not a concurrency policy. We need to look at, as we start to define intersection level of service a little bit more, we need to look at individual approaches, directional delays. It sounds like that's of very high interest. We need to be looking at queuing. And we talked several different directions on queuing. So I'm going to just leave a note here. We'll come back and capture all of that. Councilmember Hornish, I want to be mindful that he specifically talked about using a V over C level of service instead of, or slightly modified of what we're doing now. I'm not as technically gifted as Victor, but I have a note here that we need to talk about that. Now I have some of my own notes.
But to be clear, that's for intersections, not for a segment.
Yes, yes. Footnote that we will, the devil's in the details of all of this, which is why I think it's important to kind of keep option number one hanging around a bit. Because as we start to explore what it would look like to number two, move to number two, we don't want to lose any ground. We want to still be able to build complete streets. We want to be mindful of safety in sidewalks. I think one of the things we have to look at, Kendra and Victor, is when we, we've been saying decoupling multimodal, but we need to put pen to paper and actually look at the implications of doing that in the short term. So East Lake Samamish Parkway is also astric here. We will have to look at that road in particular as we move to a different concurrency policy because there are some implications for the parkway. So we will report out on that. INREX data, yes. I think there was some fist pounding, go buy it. We already gave Victor the okay to purchase the data for Sahali, so we will make that investment. As for capital.
Can I follow up with that real quick? At one point, we were going to look at options to get the data that INREX provides. I mean, do we have to use INREX? Are there other options? Have we checked in anybody else? Google, I think, has it through Waze and everything. Is that correct?
Yeah, I haven't used that. There's another vendor, Streetlight, that processes it as well. The Google, or Google. The INREX analytic package, I think, is really what you need.
Eventually, but I mean, right now, we're talking about just getting the data. I mean, I'm not sure it's worth for $15,000. I'm not sure it's worth spending a whole lot of time. So I'd say just go get it. But I didn't know if we'd looked into the other options yet or not.
When we talk about innovative data sources, which I think that's a future topic, we can talk about kind of what the different sources are. I mean, INREX is a speed-based data. When you talk about Streetlight, that's GPS. And so that can give you totally different information in terms of people's origins and destinations. So we can just talk about the richness of data.
Jesse, sorry, I have another question, though, because you said we could go buy the data for Sahali. Sahali that you're buying for 15?
No, we're buying for the whole city. But to start our Sahali analysis, we did pick up some data for that. Yes, I apologize. So back to my unintended consequences list, we also need to talk about impact fees. We want to make sure we maintain that threshold. Moving on, I generally heard head nods on capital projects, although I want to acknowledge Romero's comments about doing things in the right order. So continuing to prioritize all the other capital projects you identified should be part of the TMP. On the 21st, we would come back to you with some early scoping on Sahali to give you some ideas of options. We've at least brainstormed a staff. I'd also like to come back to you with some cost estimates so that you can, we could tell you what it's going to take to get to the end of 2018 with these project options we've put on the table. And then, we forgot to say this is part of the presentation, but this has been a footnote in all of our other conversations, which is to keep working on the TMP. You know, all these things we've been talking about today is near-term. But to keep working on the TMP, because that gets back to our revised policies and our expanded capital projects list. So I was madly scrambling to write these notes. What did I miss?
I want to make sure, oh, sorry, just to add, but I don't know if councilmembers wanted to add first.
There's no lights.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to say is there were some very good comments, particularly by you, Mayor, about the concern about decoupling multimodal. I can assure you that provision for folks who are choosing to walk, bike, or take transit are going to be very essential considerations in the TMP, following on what we heard from the community. Our intention here is not at all to take these projects out of impact fees or to make them less of a priority for the city, but to provide you with more flexibility of where you're building these. So T8 is very prescriptive about where sidewalks would be constructed. What we're trying to do is help the city to be able to prioritize and say, you know what? Yes, we're working on this, but we need to focus on providing sidewalks around the school. So again, it's moving it into more of a proactive planning-type approach. So I can assure you, those are, those are going to remain priorities. The intention here is just to give the city as much flexibility as possible.
Thank you. Is that the conclusion?
Seeing as the issue of Redmond's Merimore project came up tonight, today I got an email from the city of Redmond publicizing a open house they're having with, I think, Sound Transit on November 16th.
16th.
Somewhere in Redmond. The details are in the email I forwarded. But I think it'd be real helpful for some of the council who's not attending, and it'll see, to go to that and be a fly on the wall. And I would also encourage, frankly, residents of Samamish in general to show up for this. Because frankly, you're paying for a lot of this, guys. And it could be a major benefit to you or it could be a major problem for you, depending on how this whole project evolves. So I think it behooves us to show up and to give our input along with everybody else. Thank you.
Councilmember Hugabey?
I was going to say that in addition to just going to their meeting, we had a long discussion the other day at the Traffic Committee meeting about how do we move from here to Link Light Rail in 2023, which is just, as we know, right around the corner. And a lot of the discussion played around, how do we get a bus service that we can go down Inglewood to East Lake Samamish Parkway and then turn into Merimore, which would be much more convenient than going down 228? And given the fact that it's only six years out, how do we start talking with Metro to ensure that if we decide to do that, they know we're going to do that? They're going to change the bus service that's going to be available to us? Or possibly, we look at some other potential options that we may be able to do in order to get folks there? Because I think we all know that once Link Light Rail starts, rather than a lot of traffic heading south to the Isiquapine Highlands Parkway or the Isquap Transit Center, more people are going toward Link Light Rail. And we're going to need to address that because our streets are going to be crowded in a very different way than that transfer.
Well, very good. I think that concludes the evening. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. We'll see you here tomorrow night.